How's everybody doing?
Wonderful.
Hi.
Blowing in the breeze. Okay, that's sad. Should be recording.
What's the white stuff on the floor? What is she eating?
All right.
Hello, everyone. Looks like a lot of people had nothing else to do tonight. That's good.
Got a big agenda to work there.
Big crowd. Well, hopefully we'll get through without too much issue.
Ryan's all dressed up.
Is that Ryan with his trophy?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, is that from wood chopping? Is that your wood chopping trophy?
I shower once a month and I might as well put on a shirt and tie after.
Tonight was a night, huh?
Catholic school, Tommy, well.
There's Dell 4800 with us. All right. Hi Karen.
Hello.
Robert, how are you?
Good Chuck, you?
Things well on Johnson Road?
All good.
All good? Okay, keep an eye out there. Gary we got? Amanda we got? Eric, you say Chris is gonna join us?
Yeah, he said he was.
Okay. Hi John.
John.
The allergies are starting up.
Hopefully that's what it is, right?
Can't tell, I've never been outside.
You don't even go outside, Gary?
Not very much these days.
Yeah, now you can't play golf. Are you playing golf?
You can play golf.
Yeah, I played on Saturday. It was wonderful.
Yeah, I play golf.
Yeah, this weekend should be nice, too.
I hope so, yep.
That's what they say. All right, we'll give her one more minute. If you want to put that flag back up. Very appreciate it.
Do I see a Mr. Westbrook?
You do.
Oh, hi.
How are you?
Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
This is Dell 4800 speaking.
I got you, I got you, I got you. So is your family gonna come back up to the Candagwa Lake area this summer, you think, or not?
Oh, that's a good question. She has a reservation, I think, first week of August again, so it's TBD.
Okay, Jen, folks, I got six o'clock. Let's all pledge allegiance to the flag. Would you please join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic For which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. Hi, folks. You have tuned into the virtual meeting of the Town of Candagwa Planning Board. This is our April 29th meeting. Welcome you all. I hope you're all well. Before we get started, I know we have a lot of people on the call and we have a lot of people wanting to talk. So to keep some sort of order to this meeting, I would ask that as we go to each application, we have the applicant make a presentation. We then have the board and the applicant participate in a question and answer period. I will then ask anybody in the audience if they have any comments or concerns. Those concerns and comments will be addressed to the board. Okay, so after that occurs, then then we would go back to the board to see if there's any other questions. I would ask that if you want to speak, please state your name. So John can keep track of who's speaking and what you're saying, and that would be very helpful. No use putting your hand up because I can't see you guys' hands up because I don't have anybody on the screen. So just politely shout it out, shout out your name that you want to talk, but again, I will query as to who and when people want to talk. And then after that's finished, the board will do its final deliberations and will take action on the application. So that being said, let me introduce or do a poll of the board members. Karen, are you here?
I am here.
Ryan, are you here?
Hi.
Ryan's on mute. I know he's here. I'll go on to Gary.
Gary Eaton is here.
Bob.
I'm here.
Amanda.
I'm here.
And John Robitella is our recording secretary. We also have Lance Braybant from MRB Group. We may or may not have Christian Nadler, our planning board attorney. And at the controls, we have Eric Cooper, who is the development director of the town. So that's, those are the players, at least at the town's end. I guess we'll move right on to the first item of business, which is the testing of the publishing of legal notices. Eric, I know we have one hearing tonight. I did not see in our packet a copy of the legal notice. Would someone, either you or John, attest that the hearing for Marx Engineering representing BTY Holdings was indeed advertised and when it was advertised?
I will attest it was.
Okay.
Say that again, John?
It was in the Daily Messenger on April 17th.
Okay, let the minutes reflect that. And that being said, I'd like to open the hearing for Marx Engineering representing BTY Holdings, owner of property on County Route 10. They're requesting a single-stage site plan approval for the construction. It'll be self-storage warehouse facility and a special use permit for commercial boats, outside storage of boats. So let's move on. And Brennan, do you want to pick this up from here?
Yeah, yeah. Good evening, Brennan Marks with Marx Engineering, representing Mr. Nicholas Barrow and Brendan Wood. They are the owners on this. So what we're proposing is a new mini-storage facility for self-storage, similar to others that you've seen around. We're proposing 12 buildings total build out. They will be built out over the next, I want to say, five years. So they're not going to be, it's going to be, we're going to build a building, put it in operation, build another building, put it in operation. So doing that, we're going to have some parking, or not parking, gravel staging space at the rear of the lot that we plan to use for outdoor storage of boats, boat accessories and RVs. So that's why we requested a special use permit. After the site is completely constructed with buildings, we don't intend to have any outdoor storage. So that's, the special use essentially will be removed at that point. The, each building is about 4,500 square feet. They're going to be a metal-framed building. They'll be a, I don't know if you guys are familiar with tracties, but they'll have the roll-up doors. The first building will have a small maintenance and office area for the, to maintain the facility. The whole, all the storage buildings and driveways will be surrounded with a chain-link fence, sinks for high-tailing fence. There will be an automatic key fob entrance into the main entrance. It'll be at the south side of the site. At the north side of the site, we plan to build out a, build an access there for emergency or maintenance vehicles only. It won't be primary access. And that'll be a swing gate. I don't know if you can go to the site plan, Eric.
I'm trying. It was loading up there real quick.
So the, next page. The, there are actually two pages though. Well, the existing site as it is now is vacant. It's a fallow field. It's got two drainages that go through it. You can stay on that one for a second. Anyways, behind it is the City of Candagwa's solar facility, a solar farm, that is gonna immediately back up to the back of this site. There is a, the roundabout is on the south side of the site. That's a roundabout for County Roads 46 and County Road 10. So if you're looking at this orientation, north is to the right. The buildings will be lit with LED wall packs, which is on the next page. They are designed to control the light so that it's shielded and it spreads just in front of the building. It's not a casting light or floodlight. The site will be landscaped along the County Road 10 with shade trees. Keep going down. Next page there. They, we're proposing six red maples along the County Road 10. There you go. And then we're proposing two beds, or three beds, two at the south at the main entrance and then one at the north corner of the site. The remainder of the land that's not fenced, is not driveway, will be maintained as lawn. And if you want to scroll back up two pages, so the grading plan, there is a proposed stormwater pond at the rear of the site. At the northwest corner of the site, that will, all the drainage for the new driveway areas will be directed into that stormwater pond. There's also an infiltration trench right along the western side of the highway, exactly right there. That infiltration trench will catch the first flush of the stormwater and promote infiltration into the ground. And the larger events will be conveyed to the stormwater pond, which will retain the stormwater runoff and mitigate it. So I guess that's kind of it in a nutshell, and I'll be glad to open it up to questions.
Okay, I'll entertain any comments from the board members. I know Amanda, you had a couple of questions regarding the height of the building and the lighting?
Yeah, hi, this is Amanda. I just wanted to confirm there were a couple of different heights registered in different places in all of the documentation. What would be the final proposed height of the buildings and do they vary between 12, the 12 buildings?
All the buildings will be symmetrical, or they'll all be similar in size and height. They may vary with the number of doors and the size of doors. The proposed building height is 12 foot 6.
And that would be for all 12 buildings, right?
That's correct. Yeah, they're shallow slope roof with a approximately 9 foot 9 and 1/2 foot eave, I think it is.
Okay. And thank you for that. I appreciate that. And just one additional question here, I think, that you didn't cover in your summary with the landscaping plan. Is that included in the initial phase of the first group of buildings being built out?
The buildings are numbered in the, kind of the phase when they're going to be built. So we're going to build one through three, which are right along, let's see, right along the road.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so that main driveway will get established around those buildings for access. And at that point, they can establish the landscaping also. And you're welcome to put a condition on that. That's fine, too.
Okay, thank you. I'll leave that up to the board, how you want to decide that, but thank you, appreciate it.
So I think what you're saying, Brennan, is that the landscaping, as shown, will be installed with the initial construction of the first couple of buildings?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, very good. Anyone else in the board have questions?
Yeah, this is Gary Humes. I might as well jump on the landscaping since Amanda just talked about it. I believe that a big intent of the landscaping requirements that we have for projects like this is to prevent some sort of a screening, you know, kind of from the public view, particularly on the County Road 10 coming down north or south, that there's kind of a buffer and a screening element. Big maple trees are nice, but they're shade trees and they aren't really, I don't believe, meant for screening. So I would propose that we kind of look for some additional type, either replace those with maybe evergreen or something that would be around all year long or arbivites, or I'm not sure what else. Maybe Ryan can recommend some different things if he has the same concern. But I would personally like to see a little more landscaping for screening purposes. And not only along Route 10 on that, I guess it would be the eastern side, but maybe along the northern side as well. So as you're coming south on Route 10, there's a little bit of screening from that perspective as well. So I guess I've got a few other things that I'd like to comment on, but I'd like to maybe open that, open my recommendation up to other board members to see what they feel about the landscaping. So we can kind of all discuss that at the same time before we move on to something else. Over.
Yeah, I know the code is very specific to landscaping standards in terms of number of trees per square foot or per acre, something like that. Has someone from staff actually run those calculations?
I was gonna say, when they give you like a number, it is actually in like the parking requirement section, as I recall, for every so many square feet of parking, you need to have however many shade trees. And all that section obviously wouldn't apply here.
Okay, I know it's a concern of the ECB and I just want to make sure that we addressed it. So if there's no standards, then we're sort of at the, at our desires, like what we'd like to see. I know, and I'm glad Greg's on the line, when we talked about the subdivision of this property, there were members of the board that were concerned that the proper buffering or landscaping didn't really take effect along the eastern edge of the solar farm. And I know the developers out there tried to plant grass and the grass got mowed. And what you were left with was a view of the side of the panels from County Route 10. I think, Craig, and correct me if I'm wrong, during the subdivision process, knowing that this development was in the future, that you said, and I think the applicant, tonight's applicant was also at that meeting, said that they would provide landscaping along that western boundary of this particular property to ensure that the view of the side of the panels will not be seen, which, looking at the plan, would probably mean some landscaping to the south from the seepage area to the property line. Is that indeed a possibility, folks?
So you're proposing adding landscaping along the south property line?
No, it would be along the western property line with the silt, not the silt, the seepage pit to the north to the southern property line, Brent. So it'd be roughly where that triangle is, at the south end of the seepage area and going
This way?
Yeah, right there. And then going to the left.
And going south.
South, yeah. Because I think the buildings themselves will pretty well hide the
The buildings are definitely going to screen out the solar farm there. You're gonna have the pines up along the new entrance. Those are going to be of substantial size. There's two, three packs there on either side of the entrance right on County Road 10. So they will screen that out as much as possible. The only thing is, the only other thing we can do is add something in the rear yard, which is kind of where the, just where Eric was pointing to exactly where his cursor is. I don't know what the benefit gained by that, being so far off the road. You know, you put in a few pine trees, you're still going to see the solar panels on the residential side.
Let's get back to what Gary was saying. Maybe a denser screen along the frontage with an evergreen would be enough to not only help screen the buildings, but also that view over toward the solar farm.
So the landscaping code doesn't necessarily go into screening. It says visual separation, right? So we're providing that separation with the shade trees along County Road 10. Screening is, it would be a requirement of this board, not of the town code. It would be, if this planning board wants to mandate something like that for this project, then we would have to, of course, follow it. This is an industrial zone and there, you know, there's things like solar farms and other automotive businesses. And there's the boat storage area, corner of County Road 10 and County Road 4, which is not screened. So that would be a first for this zone to have a requirement for screening along the front.
Oh, I take, I take exception to that. The boat, the new boat storage up the road, they have evergreen trees in an offset manner. And in fact, they lost them in the first growing season and had to replant them. So we do have precedent of a evergreen buffer along County Route 10.
I believe the special permit requires adequate screening. All special use permits in the Town of Candagwa give the planning board authority to require.
The north, why there's a threshold in the north?
Yeah, if I may add to that, this is Lance. I apologize. I just wanted to add a little bit to that. Being that they are requesting outdoor storage of boats and equipment, that's exactly what Mr. Nadler was replying to. With a special use permit, those areas as referenced are to be enclosed except for access drives by evergreens or other landscaping's as required by the planning board to screen from any street or residential district.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the statue we use up at the boat storage.
Okay, so screening the boat storage from the street, would the buildings provide, I know, understand landscaping is one way to screen it. But the buildings along the front will also provide quite a bit of screening to the street.
I'm sorry, you're saying the buildings provide screening?
The buildings will screen out the storage behind it, yes.
The way you're saying, you build buildings, what they're over there, 1, 2, and 3, I don't know what the, can't see the numbers, but those three buildings in the front, you're saying that will screen? And you're somewhat, for a little bit, for a little bit, but if you've got a lot of boats down there, I don't think it's going to screen very much. And you're also not, you're going to see it as you're coming south on Route 10. You've got a pretty clear view. The only time it's going to screen is if you're right, you know, adjacent to that property itself. I still think, I'd like to see a lot more, a lot more evergreen-type screening on the roadside, on the western side there, and then also on the north side. So as you're coming down, driving south on Route 10, you don't see that. That's my opinion.
Okay. I'm gonna also, you know, Nick or Brendan, you guys want to chime in on this and see what you know, tell me what your guys are receptive to this is.
Yeah, sure. Hi, everyone. This is Nick Barrow. I'm one of the applicants.
Hey, Nick.
How you doing? Thanks for accommodating the meeting in this way. I know it's a little unorthodox. Yeah, so we just wanted to make sure it was clear that, you know, storing boats and RVs, et cetera, outdoors is only in the plans in the short term of this project. And once the buildings at the rear of the property, meaning on the west side towards the solar farm, are completed, there won't be any outdoor storage at all. So the outdoor storage we plan to do should, in the first phase of construction here with buildings 1, 2, and 3, should all fit behind those two columns of buildings. So there shouldn't be any exposed to the road. There perhaps might be some visibility traveling from the north. There perhaps might be some visibility traveling from the north to the south on the road. But all the, all the boats and RVs should be shielded by the buildings, because they're, you know, the buildings are quite tall.
And we could provide, I mean, if the north and the south, I mean, Nick, you guys, you guys have to agree to it, but we could provide screening on the north and the south of the property in those corners with evergreens to shield out the view from the road.
Well, it's just a matter of scale, right?
I mean, we're talking, you know, we're not talking a lot of trees here, we're probably talking two dozen pine trees, so.
Okay, I mean, I have no concept of what that costs, which is obviously the main issue.
Right.
By the time they grow up, though, it sounds like there's not going to be anything to cover.
Correct.
Even if you put little pine trees out, they're not gonna screen anything while they're doing their outdoor stuff.
That's right. That's probably true. And truthfully, you know, it's our, it's our hope that we have outdoor storage for as little time as possible. You know, the intent is to get the buildings constructed and occupied. So, you know, we're not, we're not looking to have seven acres of boat storage back there. It's meant to be buildings to replace the less profitable outdoor storage.
See, I'd be more inclined to say we should have trees because they help us breathe, and we have to have a few more when we, when we, you know, have barns and things put up, does take down trees and breathing things. So I'm more inclined to want them for that reason, but I think the screening is, doesn't sound like that's gonna be a big issue, if they're all indoors.
Bob, Ryan, you have any comments?
I think it's fine the way it is. Only concept I had maybe is there's houses to the south of there, I just looked on the maps, but they have pretty tall trees behind them, screening from them. That was my only thought, was the houses south of the project.
Just one house?
I think, yeah.
Just one house.
Could we maybe supplement in between the proposed leaf bearing trees, some non-leaf bearing, like evergreens, and, you know, in between? To sort of break it up? Is that a possibility? And also maybe, I think, I think Mr. Bureau said it, that sort of add a little more concentration of foliage up at the northern driveway, that entrance and exit, similar to what you did on the south side?
I, I mean, there's no reason why we can't do that, but I'm gonna default to Nick to agree to it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm defaulting, or I'm giving my ignorant opinion, because I don't know what I'm signing on for here in terms of cost. You know, if you, if you want to beef up the landscaping at the entrances a little bit, you know, we're interested in having the property look nice. I would add that we're not interested in totally screening the business from the road. We do want people to see, you know, the buildings, which are meant to look nice, and look like an operating business, that's, you know, well lit and safe and well maintained, so. I would be hesitant to sign on to any proposals that would make it difficult to see our operation. But if we want to dress up the entrances, and, you know, at the north there, to make it look more like the south, the southern entrance, that would be reasonable, I think.
Yeah, and I think what we're doing for you fellows is, there is a requirement of having landscaping in the front and side yards. The only landscaping you're really proposing is along the frontage, so we'd like to sort of hit that heavy, and because that's the only thing you'll, you'll really be having to provide any screening that, of any concern, which is abutting the road. So I think if you're putting all your time and effort and money into that, that screen along the road, I think that's certainly fair of us to, to ask for.
Hey Chuck, Ryan, how much to talk?
Yeah, hi, everybody, this is Ryan. Certainly want to kind of move this along, and I don't want this project to be hung up on landscaping. So I'm listening to the applicant, and it seems to be that there's a major cost. If maybe, Brennan, what if we were to reduce costs on the northern side and southern side, instead of going with large caliper trees, buying seedlings and trying, are those areas going to be non-mowable areas? Are they gonna go, resort back to native? Or are you gonna mow that area to the north and to the south?
I think they're gonna want to maintain it as one, and mow it. Maybe brush hog, but if we didn't seedlings in that area, that would be certainly a very easy thing for the applicant to do, and very less expensive.
And that would be with the intent, basically, everybody, the larger the caliber of the tree, the way more expensive they are.
Sure.
And they really add a lot, so. I've been indicating this for years, is that if we want to allow some flexibility and more containers, numbers, can get seedlings for, you know, a dollar fifty, two dollars and fifty cents, as long as
They don't take them to put them in.
You know, you gotta put, you gotta put, they're pretty simple, though, you'd agree with that, Brennan, right?
Yeah, oh yeah, I mean, it's just a shovel, and you could put a hundred of them in in half a day, you know.
Yeah, Brennan, I'd like to go on record and say that a dollar fifty a tree is a totally fine price, from our perspective.
Well, you know, and the county does a good job putting together a program for that.
Exactly.
You're gonna have to plant solid gold trees.
What's that?
I was joking, I was saying it's gonna have to plant solid gold trees.
There you go.
So, sound fair, on the north and south side, maybe that the applicant could put fifty seedlings on the north, fifty on the south? The standard way, and then in addition to the existing landscape, add a few more trees, of pine trees, like Gary, finding in the front, not to screen. It sounds like the applicant wants people to see the business as they drive by, but we want to screen it from the north and the south with seedlings, and then maybe there might be more success rate. Is that a solution that we can?
I agree with it, and I'll even go as far as saying, we'll place those evergreens at the aisles between the buildings, so that helps screen out what's behind it as you're driving along County Road 10.
Yep.
Muted.
Yep, head on mute. So I'm the one that started this, I think that solution's fine, I agree with that. If you put a few, just a few evergreens along there, maybe do something to the north entrance, like you've done to the south, and then just put seedlings on the northern and southern, I'll call it border.
Property lines or something like that?
Yeah, somewhere along there, scattered throughout there, whatever, just a ton of, some of those. I think I can live with that, that's acceptable to me, that's good.
Yeah, and from our perspective, it sounds like that'll, that'll look nice, which is in our interest as well, so.
Right, I don't want, yeah, I don't, I never intended to totally screen it out so people can't see it. I mean, I understand people have to know it's there, and for business purposes and things like that. I had no intention of doing that, but I just did wanted to provide a little more.
Okay, well, we're happy to cover the whole thing if you give us a 300-foot sign as well.
I had a question for you. My question is, is there, what kind, if any, are you going, of work are you gonna be doing on the inside for boat repairs? Things like that? Or is it just storage?
Karen, before we get, let's sort of conclude the landscaping. John, did you tell them?
Oh, I thought we did, okay.
Well, I just want to make sure John got what we agreed upon, for the minute.
Yes, I did.
Okay, all right, so let's get off the landscaping, and Karen, you were mentioning the activity in the buildings.
I just wanted to know if there was any repairs, or winterizing, or what you're doing inside?
No, there'd be no repairs, no, no work on boats or vehicles, it's strictly storage.
Brendan, I saw you raised your hand, Brendan Wood, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, thanks, guys, and I want to echo Nick's sentiments earlier, I appreciate everybody meeting in this fashion. But just a quick comment, I think, you know, it's in our interest and the best interest of the business from an aesthetic purpose, to have things look nice anyway. I think to reinforce that, you know, we don't really want the screening just for exposure of the business, but the storage business is something that's significantly impacted by aesthetic appearance and appeal. So it's, you know, kind of a mutually beneficial for us to take that approach to it. As far as repairs and access inside the units, we're actually not providing power to the tenants, so they don't have the ability to run power tools and pressure washers and that sort of thing either.
Answer your question, Karen?
Yes, it did.
Okay. Let me go through a couple things I have. How about trash recycling? I know Lance brought it up in his review letter. Will you have a trash dumpster, or is it the obligation of each one of your tenants to take their garbage home with them? Would there be any reason to generate much garbage other than the office?
So I spoke with Nick about this. There will be no refuse on site. Anything in the office will be taken off by personnel, employees. The, if there was ever an issue where they had to empty a unit, it would be a short-term roll-off, hauled in to empty a unit, and then that would leave. So that would, it said that would only be temporary, as in maybe a day or two. So there's no long-term refuse.
And the facility is open 24/7, right? With a, with the key box, yep. And I guess, related to the access, the fire department wanted to make sure they got a copy of a knockbox, so they would have access, should they have to get in?
Yeah, that's standard, yeah, to provide a knockbox that would be near the key fob for them to access.
Okay. Let the record show that was so stated. Lighting? I know we talked about it briefly, it'll be our required lighting, and your hours, your lights will be on all the time?
That, at this point, yeah, we're planning to have them on all the time. Or, I mean, should I say, at night?
That storage. And they say your boats will be up on trailers when they're being stored?
Yes.
And I think you did say there'd be no maintenance of the boats, or the RVs while on the property?
That's correct.
Okay.
I got, I got a question about the couple issues, the typical baller detail shows asphalt driveways. In the end, at the end of the project, when that final build-out, is it gonna be, is the entire, is the entire parking area gonna be asphalt? And if so, is the engineer, is MRB okay with the stormwater from the roofs being directed to the stormwater facility? So a two-part question. Asphalt, if so, Lance, are you, is it all good from an engineering standpoint?
And I've talked to the applicant about this, in the full build-out, once all the buildings are constructed, they would like to put down asphalt for the whole facility. But they do not want to be obligated into it with the set of plans at this point. The stormwater is sheet flow on all the drive and parking areas, and all the roof water will be directly, there'll be no gutters and eaves, so it'll be directly runoff onto the parking areas, which all will sheet to the stormwater facility, so.
Yeah, if I may, as Brendan mentioned, it's my understanding that all the stormwater will be installed as part of the first phase. Therefore, all the mitigation measures as required and shown will be installed for the duration of the entire project. It'll be operational and maintainable, in accordance with the town and DC criteria.
I just want to go through some of the third-party reviews on this, not to prolong the discussion, just make sure we got them covered. You were at the ZVA last week, and you got your variance for the front yard encroachment, so that's covered. There was a statement of operations that you included dated February 27. I think Lance had a couple comments on it, but I don't think there was anything there of any substance. The Ontario County Planning Board reviewed it, really didn't come to any conclusion, so I guess we're, there was nothing there that we haven't discussed. The ECB reviewed it on March 5, and their only concern was the thing about making sure that the proper tree allocation was complied with. And also, they were concerned about the, I believe, the storm drainage being so close to the property line, but I think that's pretty well controlled with it being directed into that swill coming out of the retention basin. So if I hear no objections, I think we're okay there. There was a wetlands determination found, and there was a JD determination after the fact, so I think they are okay with the project as proposed. The Ag Board really wasn't concerned, because it's not really agricultural property. Jim Fletcher had a couple concerns regarding the water, and I'm sure you addressed those, I think that's in MRB's letter. And we did not hear from Hopewell, right, Eric? I know we sent them a copy of the plans. Okay, I'm being muted, I'll assume you're saying we did not hear from, not hearing from you means that not here from them.
You're correct.
Okay. And the fire department, fire chief, had the comment we looked at previously. All right. Seeker, Brennan, on your part one? Yep.
Can I, I still had a few questions from the initial.
I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna cut it off, I, there was a loney action, I just thought I'd go through.
A couple things you just said, too. I believe Ontario County made a comment regarding the proximity of that southern entrance with some other entrances across the street, and with the adjoining property, and I wanted to better understand that and wonder if, as a result of that, you'd given any consideration to moving the primary entrance to the north, rather than the south, and swap the primary and emergency access entrances as a result of that? Can you, can you just?
The southern entrance, the main entrance is on the south side of the property, that actually shares the apron with the access driveway to the solar farm. So you can imagine the access driveway back to solar farm is not gonna get much used, right? So, and we're sharing the same apron as it, so we're essentially sharing the same entrance. And the one on the north side of the property, they did mention that in proximity to the qualtuck across the street. However, that's not gonna be a primary entrance, that'll actually barely, barely ever be used for maintenance and emergency use.
Okay, so they were commenting on, because they, the comments had the primary entrance, so that's why I thought they were talking about the southern one was close to the other one.
There's an access road there that goes back to the solar farm.
All right, well, that's fine.
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
Then you'll, you'll ultimately have to get an encroachment permit from the county for both, I guess, both entrances, so they'll have their say on that.
Yeah, the DPW will have to permit the entrances.
So the other, the other question I had, had to do with the gate, the primary entrance gate. Should, should a number of people be in there, storing their goods, or retrieving goods, or whatever they do, and we lose power? Is there any method for them to manually operate that gate or get out? Are they gonna be stuck there until power gets resumed? Is there emergency power? Or how are they gonna get out if, if the gates close, there's no power?
Very good question, and I think there's a battery backup for manual operation. I'm not 100% on that, but we can account for that on the gate. I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna say I'm 75% that there's a battery backup for that gate to allow for manual operation.
And there'll have to be some instruction, I guess, provided to
Yeah.
owners or something on what to have. Owners or something on what to have, what to do if if power goes out for some reason.
Yeah, I mean, there's the the owner's not not going to want to put a generator in for this facility. Because that's significant. What's that?
Tap into the solar farm for your.
Right, right. Much like, but I mean, if any other six circumstance where you were trapped, then your your emergency response team would come into play, right?
Yeah, but I but if there's a an easy method to enable people to manually operate it to get in out, that's, I think, what we would.
Yeah, and I'll and I'll verify that with the gate manufacturer.
Okay, that was that's all I had, Chuck.
Okay. Before I open it to the audience, anybody else on the board have any questions, comments, concerns?
Comment I have, Chuck, this is Ryan. Are just consistent with the standard fence requirements that we have with the solar field. If you guys are okay with that, it'd be a condition, not a big deal. Just move this thing forward.
Okay. I think it's a six foot chain length fence. Am I correct, Bren?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, one other thing I was going to bring up before you move on to the audience was in your seeker part one Brennan. There was the reference to nine buildings, not 12. And I think there were a couple of questions that may have been left unanswered. So do you want to go through that part one and make sure it gets updated? And get it to Lance so he can add the part two and part three?
Yep.
All right, I will now, I see we have 25 participants. I hope you all don't want to talk on this application, but any event, anyone who does, would you please? Speak up. That's the only way we're going to know you're there. Identify yourself and make your comment.
If you're familiar with a Zoom app, raise your hand.
Okay, do you see any, Eric?
No, let's see. I know Greg Westbrook is with us. Did you guys see anything, Greg?
Just one thing, welcome to the neighborhood.
Thanks, Greg, and thanks for your help tracking that letter down. That was a big assistance.
Stick around, Greg. It's gonna be a good meeting. All right, I will now close the hearing. And we'll deliberate on the the resolutions in front of us. One question that I guess Chris Natter, Brennan said something about the boat storage would be temporary boat and RV. And they wouldn't need the special use permit perpetually, but don't our special use permits go perpetually?
That's absolutely correct. They go perpetually and are required for the boat storage.
Mm hmm. Okay, so even though it's going to be a short period of boat storage, the 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 special use permit would continue. Okay.
We have a temporary store or special use permit for temporary use, which I think theoretically could apply. But the boat storage special use would be more applicable.
Yeah, and that that usually puts a deadline or a sunset on it, the temporary. And you don't know what the sunset is here. Yep.
And the one we're considering is is perpetual runs.
There is a requirement that the zoning inspector, some enforcement officer inspects it every three years. So we could deem it abandoned at the point that it's no longer in use.
Which brings me up to the issue of the landscaping being the requirement, as Chris said, part of the requirement of the special use permit. And I would ask and hope that the enforcement officer in his three year inspections checked to make sure that the landscaping is still vibrant and alive. And if it's not, that would be, I guess, a violation of the special use permit and would have to be replaced. Is that indeed a fact? Okay.
Yes, and there's a section within the landscaping code that says it has to be maintained in vigorous growing condition or something to that effect.
Okay, because I know that was an issue up the street and it took a while to get the trees replaced. All right. Not hearing anything else from anyone. I will entertain a motion on the, let's take the seeker. I think it's an unlisted action. Oh, Lance, I'm sorry. Do you have anything else to add regarding this application?
Um, no, I I think, oh, I guess for the record, I as part of the MRB's common letter, a couple of things that we're looking at is one, making sure that Brennan, as part of the the process, identified a phasing plan the best of visibility. We understand that we don't know when those buildings will be in place. But what we want to know is the order in which they would be installed, just to make sure that access to the facilities, access around the site for fire apparatus reasons. All that stuff is obtainable and and kept orderly as this project progresses in 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 the storage facility aspect. The other part, another comment that we asked for was would the security gate going around the facility? And the only primary access to the stormwater management facility is through the site that a consideration for a gate to allow access to the facility be provided on the premise as well. That way we can enter the site through the gate and then get to the the stormwater facility on a hard surface for maintenance purposes. Now, maintenance purposes will be the obligation of the applicant. There's going to be a stormwater maintenance agreement that will be required prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or completion in this regard. But we still want an easement and we still want access for emergency purposes.
Yeah, I we're okay with adding a gate for maintenance to the stormwater pond. And the the phasing, I'd be glad to work out with you, Lance. It's basically going by the the number of buildings, the how they're numbered. But, uh, you know, that we can, we can put something together specific to a phasing.
If Brendan, it might be as simple as just as part of your construction schedule, just identifying that that's what you're anticipating to do.
That's no problem.
Okay, thanks, Lance. And I think you covered most, if not all, those items in your letter of the 23rd, right?
Correct.
Okay, we have the seeker resolution in front of us. Again, it's an unlisted action. If somebody from the board would be so good to handle that, I appreciate it.
I'll be glad to move the seeker. Or do you want us to read it?
No.
No. I'll be glad to move to approve the seeker as presented. Okay.
Okay, and I guess Brennan and the applicant can see it in front of them. So I don't think there's anything out of the ordinary here. Again, we just like an update on part one. And if that that occurs, then I will take a second.
I'll take that second, Bob, of course.
Okay, Karen motioned and Bob seconded a the seeker resolution for an unlisted action for this particular property. If all in favor, say aye.
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 And and for the record, if I may, that is for a determination of non significance on the action.
Right, correct. Do I hear any oppose? Hearing none, the the motion passes. Can we move on to the, I think you want to do the order of the site plan next?
Yes.
Do the site plan before special use, right?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, when we get that up on the screen.
Tell it with your breath. Is there any way you can move on without it being on the screen? Do you guys have it in front of you? I know it's sent everybody, but.
Safety sub approved, the special use permit approval right now.
Yeah, I know that that one's up.
Oh.
Well, we want to do the site. I think Chris has recommended many, many moons back that we do the site plan first before the special use. So without the actual verbiage in front of us, I think most of us saw it on the what Lance had sent out to us. I guess my only question, Lance, are there any additional conditions? I know we talked about a lot of items here that we're putting upon the applicant's plate to to fulfill. Do you have a list of those conditions?
Yeah, for for site plan, bear with me. I I have four that I have written down and this was just based on your dialogue tonight. One was in regards to the landscaping along the entrances. I had identified that the northern Morse entrance was to match the southern most entrance. But then you guys changed that to be seedlings. So I didn't, I wasn't quite sure how you wanted me to word that, but that was my consideration.
I I think we said that seedlings will be planned along the northern and southern side of portions of the site. And that the northern entrance would be treated landscape wise, the same as the southern. And also the supplemental evergreen trees be put in between the the planned maple trees or olive trees, whatever was planned there, the leaf bearing trees.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I agree. I just, I think one condition, so condition number eight would be that your landscaping in the form of seedlings are to be installed along the north entrance in a manner to match the southernmost entrance.
No, no.
No, that's not, that's not right.
Not right.
Lance, I would propose that it would be for landscape, additional landscaping be added to include seedlings on the northern and southern portions of the of the lot. And and then for the northern entrance, that that resemble the southern entrance. And that the third is that this is is additional evergreens interspersed on the front of the maple trees on the turn side.
Yeah, along County Road 10.
Along the front, yeah.
Okay, so that's one condition.
That's one condition.
All right. So then the what would be condition number 10 would be the plans would be updated to identify the approved variances granted by the ZVA. And then condition number 10 would be that the EAF be updated as discussed tonight and resubmitted as part of the revisions.
Okay, any other conditions folks want to add? I think that covers everything. All right, so those are the conditions. Eric was able to put the resolution up in front of us. Be no further conditions or corrections. Does someone want to make a motion?
Fence standards, Lance, fence standards. Right?
I'm hearing that Brian wants to include specifics regarding the fence standards as a condition.
The standards of the fence around this application meet the standards of the fence around the solar application.
I believe the one around the solar application had a height off the ground requirement to allow.
Two inches.
Wildlife.
That was it.
Does the applicant want that if it creates some type of security risk?
Two inches.
And hold on, before we make mountains out of mold hills, we spent way too much time on that in the last application. It's a standard practice. There's a six inches of space between the ground and the fence. That's it. It's not, it will keep the deer out. No one's getting underneath the six inches. Brendan, would you agree with that or no?
I would agree with it.
Okay, great. Next.
All right, so 11 would be that the fence detail be updated. And then I'll come up with whatever the language we had proposed for the solar project.
All right, with those with with those added conditions, I will make a motion to approve a site plan. Single stage site plan for Mark's Engineering, representing BTY Holdings LLC for commercial outdoor storage, storage of boats and for it's not really for the commercial storage of boats, right? It's isn't it for the site plan is really more for commercial storage, right?
Commercial.
Yes.
For boats and accessories.
Well, the site plan is kind of for both, but yeah, you're right.
But the way it's written, the way it says here, it's for commercial outdoor storage of boats and boat accessories. But it's really more for the commercial storage units and outdoor storage of boats.
I believe it says single stage site plan and special use permit. But so you want me to change single stage site plan? And then after that, add whatever the terminology is for the warehouses that are proposed to storage building?
All right.
Hey Lance, all you have to do is take it off our agenda item. It's specific there that it's a single stage site plan approval for the construction of self storage warehouse and a special use permit for commercial outside boot storage. So if you use that, that would cover cover them both for the site plan approval.
Okay. All right, so with that, I I so moved, we approve that that single stage state plan.
Okay, I have motion from Gary. Do I hear a second?
Okay. Brian.
Okay, that was Karen?
Ryan.
I don't sound like that.
Brian was using his falsetto. All right, I got a motion from Gary, a second from Ryan, all in favor. Opposed, I hear none. Okay, let's move on. And last but not least, the special use permit for the boat storage. That's the, okay.
There it is. And I'll go ahead and do this one as well. Approve a or make a motion to approve a special use use permit for the commercial store, outdoor storage of boats and boat accessories. Mark Engineering, representing BTY Holdings LLC. And do we want, do we want to add the same conditions on this that we added to the site plan? Do we need?
I don't know why.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. So there'll be, what would we do, add add four more?
That's what I think we heard.
Yes, yes, four more. So total of 12, 13, total of 13 conditions.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Got a motion from Gary, a second from Karen. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, it's passed. Okay, thanks, Brennan. Thanks, folks. Good luck out there.
I'll be here still, but thank you.
Oh, okay, that's right. You're the the man of attraction. All right, so with that being done, we move on to new site plans. We're now looking at a plan from Alan Elizabeth Lupton, owners of property at 3459 Lakeview, where they're seeking a site plan approval for a tear down and a rebuild of a single family dwelling in the RLD zoning district. I think we spent some time on this on a at a previous meeting. But the hang up there was getting their zoning relief for their spa hot tub. And I think that has since occurred. So if someone could refresh what we're looking at out there, Alan, are you there?
Hello, my name is Pete Heinselman.
Okay, I'll take me.
How are you tonight, guys? Yeah, so I'm I'm representing Alan and Brooke, the owners. I am the architect for the project. We also have Anthony Venenzi on online to talk about drainage and grading. And we have Sue Steele to discuss, excuse me, the landscaping that we're proposing and shoreline guidelines. So for me, I'm just going to kind of run through, give you the introduction. But yes, Chuck, you are correct. We did successfully get our variance for the spa, which would be in the rear yard last week. So now we are through with the ZVA and.
Congratulations.
I'm sorry?
Congratulations.
It was interesting online. So to kind of refresh everyone's memory, yes, this this project is 3459 Lakeview Lane, which is at the end of Lakeview Lane down on the cul-de-sac. And it is a double property where we are doing a raise and rebuild of the existing structure. The existing structure is an old lake cottage. And we are proposing to take that down and build a new single family residence with attached two car garage for. that down and build a new single-family residence with attached two-car garage for Alan Brooke and their family of three. This will be their permanent residence. They currently live up the street from there on County Road 16, but not on the water. So the idea with this is to build a new permanent residence for themselves to be on the lake with their three daughters. Alan Brooke have a business on Main Street, so if they are not new to town, so they've been in Canada for quite some time, and what we're creating here is a little bit of kind of a modern farmhouse lake-style home. It is two stories with a little bit of a walkout on the northeast side, as you can see in the grading, but architecturally, we're working with some, a little bit of a tent fall steeper roof pitch, but keeping the building height as low as possible with very lower roof lines and vaulted ceilings in the upper levels, so kind of creating a pretty low height impact on the lakeside and on the roadside, working with kind of natural materials of Douglas fir timber, stone veneer, and just regular horizontal clapboard siding. And we are coming in off of Lakeview Lane, and we, we have created, this is the plan, which you're looking at the lakeside elevation, and what I think we'd like to go into now is to get Sue to explain a bit more of the landscape plan. Eric, there it is.
Was that the one you got it?
Yeah, I think probably that's what Sue would like to start with. Sue, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, this plan's fine. This is fine. If you want to just maybe make it a bit larger so everyone can see it. Yeah. So I can, everyone can hear me okay, I assume? I'm not muted anymore. I have a problem.
And this is Sue Steele speaking?
Yes, Sue Steele. I'm the landscape architect on the project. So I'll just talk you through the site design here, and then I'll pass over to Anthony, who can talk a little bit about stormwater and grading and such. So looking at the plan here, the home is set on the site, as Pete mentioned, you can see the setback is noted in the, in the red line there. The proposed house garage and driveway are shown, and looking at the front yard, there is a very significant enlarged ash tree that will remain along the west property line. There is a large walnut tree that is not shown on this plan, this is the proposed condition, but a large walnut tree that was removed, and we can discuss that, that was in that location. We're planting, we have a very simple walkway up to the front covered porch. Foundation plantings around the front of the house. As we go to the rear and lakeside, which is the most significant kind of view from, for the community, we have planted significantly along the lake, anchoring both the north and south property corners, establishing some vegetation that'll frame views to the house. There is a bit of a great difference between the break wall and the proposed patio, which is on the rear of the house, and to make that a comfortable path walking from the patio down to the break wall lawn area where the dock access is, the north dock is shown on the aerial photo there, we're incorporating a series of steps with a landing, and those would be planted on both sides to help screen and soften the hardscape associated with the cheek walls that would be needed to implement that, that access. Along the patio, you can see to the south, there is a hot tub. That hot tub is exposed 18 inches above the patio grade, so it's elevated, it's not in ground, and there is planting to screen and soften that and kind of shield that visually from, from the lake. And then on the south face of the house, there's, there's some just softening and plantings to soften that side of the house. We are maintaining lawn access on both the north and south side of the house. It's 12 feet wide, which is sufficient for access, you know, to bring things down to the dock and such. So there is not a lot of planting on either north or south side of the house for that reason. One key thing to note, the break wall, this property did have two, did have a series of steps that you can see in the aerial, there is what looks like a dock, a second one south of the one that were mentioned, yep, where the cursor is. That, that access way, those steps down to the beach will be removed, and the wall will be repaired in that location and lawn restored at the top of break wall in that spot. So there's the only change along the break wall on the property. There was an existing walnut in the area where the, where the word lawn is up by the north dock there. That walnut, yep, to the right there, your cursor, about there, that walnut was in poor health and has since been removed. There is an existing break wall that is removed, and we're vegetating that area and softening the slope to access around the house in that location. So from the lake, your view will really be, and I don't know, I know Eric, you have some, there's some lag time with pulling up the elevations, but, but you'll, we're following the shoreline development guidelines and really starting to soften the architectural aesthetic of the house by anchoring both kind of left and right, looking at the house with some vegetation that's a bit taller, and then bringing plantings along the foundation of the house and up the stairs to really start to integrate it with the landscape a little bit more. The plant list, the plant materials that we're using are native and non-invasive. We're not proposing any invasive plant species that would have negative impacts on the lake. I think that's all. Anthony can talk a bit about the grading and the stormwater design?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. So right now, the original house as set doesn't have any kind of stormwater whatsoever. It's just, you know, roof drains and splash blocks and water's just making its way toward the lake over, sort of like a sheet flow design. The design we're looking for is to try to get this water, any water that falls or any rain that falls on the site, most of the stuff that's on the west side of the house, we're going to kind of swell around and get that water into a swell, and some of those swells are going to have a, like a crushed stone perforated drain trench below the surface of the grass that will catch some of that stormwater. Those trenches will also carry the roof runoff. So that roof runoff is going to be directed into some underground crushed stone perforated pipe trenches, and it'll make its way along the north and the south side of the house to two overflowed dry wells that will be on the northeast and the southeast side of the house, and those dry wells will have a, you know, a six to 12 inch surround, stone surround that they're going to be put in with, with a, like an HDP pipe with holes drilled in it so water can get into those and percolate back into the soil. If there is an event that would overflow those, they will overflow and then sheet flow to the lake, but if that does happen, it'll be a gentle flow. It won't be anything direct. So that's how we're kind of dealing with the stormwater. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, open it up to the board.
I have a question, and that is, I couldn't tell from your drawings what color the house is and what color the roof is.
Colors we're actually still deciding on. Right now, it's going to be some sort of a natural, you know, lake-style color scheme. We don't, we don't have this colored at all. It's just a black and white drawing. We are leaning towards a gray stone and exposed Douglas fir for the timbers and that, and that type of detailing, but in terms of the actual siding and roof, we are still in discussion on.
Well, I hope the discussion is not around white.
Okay.
That's all. Because from the lake, it looks very reflective, and we've made a mistake doing that before, so I just bring it up.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think we can go so far as to strongly discourage white.
White or silver, yes.
Silver or aluminum or anything.
Thank you, Chuck.
I think Pete knows where we're coming from, so yeah, yeah, we have found out the hard way that some can be pretty intrusive looking from the lake if they're...
No, that sounds lovely. It just sounds lovely.
Okay.
Yeah, this Bob, I have a question. For Pete or Anthony? Okay, thank you. I, I think you guys answered most all my questions in the last meeting, and Sue's explanation of the spa and how far down it sits with the foliage in front of it is great. My question is, Anthony or Pete, how will that spa be drained? Will it go into the sewer or to the lawn?
I believe that the standard for the town is because if it's being chlorinated or whatnot, we will have to drain it into the sewer. I don't believe that the town allows us to do any kind of ground because of the chemicals that are in it. I know we've dealt with that before at different projects. We did do a, we did do one on Fallbrook recently, and the town requested that we tied the spa into the house system. So I don't know if Eric has that, if that's a standard or something that the town just requests.
As I recall, that is in the section of the town code where it relates to swimming pools in the RLD.
Yep. That's typically what we try to do. We don't want to have any drainage of chemicals that close to the lake, getting into the lake and negatively affecting it.
Thanks, Anthony. Could you make that part of the plan or part of a condition, just so it's on the plan?
Yes, we could do that.
Thank you.
And Bob, you got your question answered regarding the floor drain in the garage, is that there will not be one?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, they answered all these ones perfectly, but thank you.
Anyone else on the board?
Yeah, this is Gary. I have a question, and it has to do with the gas line. It looks as if, I see where there's a new water line, at least it looks like it's being put on the, on the drawing, but I'm wondering about the gas line and where that's, if you're going to utilize it, where's it going to be connected into the house? It appears the existing gas line right now would be entirely underneath the concrete driveway and the new concrete driveway. I'm wondering if that's, if that's appropriate, and whether you're, you're going to reroute that gas line and how it's going to be connected to the house, and if you are, we need to show it on the, on the plans.
Yeah, we could definitely do that. It will be more than likely, it will be rerouted around either the, the south side of the garage and into the building, or wherever the mechanical room may be, but it won't be going into the garage.
Right, and just to kind of elaborate, if you leave it here, Eric, excuse me, yeah, the proposal of what we'll probably end up doing is going around the south side, along the south side of the driveway, along the south side of the garage, and when you get to the southeast corner of the garage, we will turn it towards the north and poke into the, into the, into the lower level at that point.
We will address that. We'll address that. We will put that on the plan for the final signature.
All right, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, anyone else?
Couple comments.
Lance, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ryan.
So I do appreciate the correspondence about the trees. That was one of the biggest black walnut trees I'd ever seen in, in the area, and when black walnuts get that big, generally speaking, they, they have something wrong with them. But man, that was a beautiful John and Rob Porbatella, for the record, that was like a 60-inch black walnut, and that must have been 100-plus years old. And I saw the pictures of the rock on the inside. There's no way to put a value on those trees. And so it was going to have to come down at one point or the other. I would like to commend the landscape architect on this project. Awesome landscaping plan, high quality. You know it's landscape architect when they, when you see a plan like that. And, and that quality, I'm very thankful for bringing that to the board. Beautiful plan, fully support that. The one question I do have is when I went on the site, the, the large tree remaining, I think it's an ash, it's a huge tree, and it's interfering with the utility lines, and it looks like it's really dangerous. And, and here, I would, would have loved to have seen the black walnut saved, not because it was, it was going to die soon, but I understand that. But my gosh, what's the reasoning to keep that tree when you're investing into this property? I don't understand that. That would be the one that I would say, let's take that one down for safety issues around the utility lines. I don't understand why that one's being kept.
So Ryan, thank you for your comments, and I can, I can tell you that I've had many clients that have been quick to remove trees for the safety of their home, and this black walnut, I thought for sure would be a quick removal, and it was many weeks of decision. We brought an arborist out. We did not want to lose that tree, and we had plans to keep it, and, and, you know, we made the tough decision due to many reasons to take it down, and thankfully, before the house was constructed, saw the decay inside, and, you know, it was unfortunate. The ash tree, it's incorrectly marked on this plan that's on the screen right now. That is an ash. The previous owners invested significantly in treating it for Emerald Ash Fore, and the Locktons have now taken on that stewardship for this tree. It is a very old and large tree. It is cabled, which is normal to help preserve structurally trees. That's, that's a standard practice, and it's, we had the arborist in, take a look at that as well. It's, it's in good health. It has great growth on it, so they're going to continue to treat it to prevent it from getting the Emerald Ash Fore, and it adds extreme value to the landscape, the property, and the community. So they're holding on to that one as long as they can as well. As far as a hazard, it's not, it's not as much of a hazard to, to the house as the black walnut would have been.
Well, please pass on our appreciation. It is, if you got time, folks, go take a look at that ash. It is another beautiful tree that, that adds value to, it's unmeasurable how much value that, that ash is to the shoreline guidelines. Like, that tree is really, really nice. And so the only last comment I have is, does anyone know what's happening with the property to the north, and what are the impacts to the property, that, that property to the north? Eric, do you have any idea? And then I'm all set on this project.
So as far as what their plans are for the north?
Yeah, I guess I, I don't really know who, any, yeah, what's the situation with that crystal? Is it the same owners?
Yeah, it's the ones noted on the, on the sheet there. The cooks really don't know what their plans are for it. I mean, they haven't expressed anything to me, so I'm not too sure, but as you can tell, they have a large hedge right there, and the cooks have provided a lot of screening on some other portions of their property, so I'm sure if they want to, they can screen it. They certainly have enough property there.
Yeah, no, for the record, John, I think that, as part of this application, if we could just let the town manager know, ripe piece of property for, for open space protection to the north there.
Okay, anyone else on the board? If not, I'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience like to comment on this application? If so, raise your hand. Any takers, Eric?
Nobody raise their hand in here?
Okay, just to go over some boilerplate, ZBA did review and approve the variances required on February 18th, and most recently at the hot tub on the, last week, the 21st. The sewer district, oh, and by the way, the 421 approval should be noted on the plan. I see in your zoning block, you have the 228 approvals, but please put the 421 approval on that same sheet. Sewer district, I don't think they have any big things other than you're, you're tying into an existing... Uh, sewer district, I don't think they have any big things other than you're, you're tying into an existing sewer lateral. The ECB on March 6th had some comments, which I think have been pretty well addressed. That was where the bald eagle concern came up. And I think that was, that was addressed or confirmed at the last meeting that it flew the coop. And Jim Fletcher had some questions about the water line. I think that can be addressed. We certainly discussed the shoreline guidelines. I think the record John can show that they were adequately discussed. And I concur that Sue, you did a nice job on the presentation as to how you're protecting the shoreline. MRB had some comments from their 220 letter. Lance, you have anything else to add to that?
Uh, no, I believe that both between the landscape architect, Anthony, and the board, they've covered most of those comments.
Very good. Uh, we did get a comment from Chris Jansen regarding making sure that the house is two feet above the lake level. So he, he had asked about that.
It's significantly above. The first floor is significantly above it.
I, I thought so. Yeah, okay. And our friends at the county planning board in their 211 dissertation recommend denial. So we need a super majority on this, uh, this application. If you go down to the bottom, I think.
Do they have a reason to deny, is it just the elevation or what?
They deny, they deny automatically multiple areas variances in the RLD.
Okay.
It's, they say the cumulative effect. The cumulative effect of what's occurring on the lake. So in any event, just keep in mind, we'll have to keep in mind that it has to be a much, a super majority. We did not hear from Kevin Alveney, so I assume he was okay with the plan. And all that being said, we heard from no one in the audience. So I think we're ready to move on to the seeker.
I'll move to approve the seeker resolution. That means that this is a type two kind of operation and plan. With no adverse consequences.
We hope not.
Right.
Second? I'll second for something, for me to do. Uh, okay, I have a motion from Karen, a second from the chairman. Uh, if there's no further questions, let's take a vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let's move on to the site plan. Get it on the screen. Somebody want to handle that?
Yeah, I'll take that. I'll make a motion to a site plan, CPN 20003, Fenencia Associate Representing Allen in Elizabeth. Then 3459 Lakeview Lane on a site plan approval with the four conditions, nine conditions.
Did you have any other ones, Lance?
Yeah, if I may, I would first like to strike out condition number eight as written, which it's in regards to note number nine from the cover being removed. The revised plans do in fact remove comment number nine, I believe.
Okay.
So then there would be a total of eight, and then I added two more based on conversation tonight for consideration. Maybe I'm wrong. One was that the site plans to be revised to identify the proposed gas line and connection locations. I believe Anthony mentioned that he would revise the plans to show those locations. And then the, what would be condition number 10, a note in regards to the draining of the spa and how we'll be complying with code.
Drainage, yes. Correct.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, a motion, a second, motion from Bob, second from Karen. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Okay, we have our super majority. Thank you, folks. Uh, all right, thanks to the Luptons and their, their consultants. Especially their patients, that's right.
They've been with us in this application process for a long time.
Good things take time. Alrighty. You're welcome. Let's move on to, uh, next page, which would be Brennan and Brennan Marks representing Mark Lacy, owner of property at 3516 Sandy Beach Drive. And Mark's requesting a site plan approval for the construction of a patio and deck in the RLD district. And I guess Brennan, you're going to pick this up?
Good evening, yeah, thank you. Mark and Suzanne is here, are here also to answer any questions that we may have. On the bottom line, the, the basic, um, project here is they, they purchased a house on Sandy Beach. They, uh, it was in need of repair, so they tore down and rebuilt the house in the same footprint. When they rebuilt the house, they had a, they had a permitted door on the north side, which they needed a deck and, and access to the sidewalk or to the, to the sandy beach and to the lake. So we are proposing a paver sidewalk from Sandy Beach as they park across the Sandy Beach Drive next to the masonry garage where this is where the parking area is. And then they'll be able to walk down and access the front door of the house and then also access the lake from the, from that sidewalk. There'll be a deck on the north side of the house. Get to the door on the north side of the house, which is already installed. The, there's, it's about 24 inches above grade now the door is, so it'll be three steps. And then along the lakeside, there'll be a paver patio to, uh, to enjoy the lake. We're also proposing ornamental grasses along the lake shore. Uh, we're going to keep an existing ash tree that's there. And we're going to plant some arborvitae along the south of the new patio. So we're doing some landscaping to, to help the shoreline guidelines. And we're also preserving a tree that's there. In good faith, we've also provided some drainage for the roof leaders that's come off the existing house. We're connecting those roof leaders to some pipes that are in the, that go through the, the break wall at the lake. But on the north side, we're going to run it through a infiltration trench first, which is going to be 24 inches deep and have six inch, six inch perforated drain pipe in that to give it a chance for that first, that annual storm to soak into the ground and infiltrate into the soil before it discharges into the lake. The one on the southwest corner of the house is, is too close and there's no room to do anything there. So that'll be a direct discharge. The, we did receive the variances for the sidewalk or the patio, paver, paver patio and deck from the property line from the ZBA. We are under the lot coverage for this zone. And one of the reasons they granted the, the variances is for safe egress for, for the, the residents and their parents to the lake from, from their vehicle. And with that, I guess I'll just turn it over to you guys for questions.
Okay.
Did we have any comments from Kevin Alveney?
I did not see any. Did you see any, Eric?
No, he hasn't. Well, he didn't provide comments on this. He hasn't provided a lot of comments in the recent past.
On this property, you mean?
Right, no comments on this property.
Okay, well, I'd like an opinion because I go by that house quite often and there's an awful lot of water around that area that is pooling a lot. So I just want to make sure that there's not any drainage into the lake and stuff that we're not aware of.
I don't know, Karen, that that's a Kevin Alveney opinion as much as an engineering opinion and perhaps.
Okay, okay.
Brennan can speak to that.
Okay.
You mean, the, the site is within the floodplain.
Yes.
It, it does receive drainage from Sandy Beach Drive, the little drive that is there. And, and surrounding the house, we're actually going to elevate the patios a little bit from, from the existing grade to help drain water away from the house.
Will it go into the neighbors, though?
Um, they're still going to maintain the same grade at the property lines, not the south and north. That infiltration trench we're putting along the north line will help drain the area, the surface water in that area also, surface and groundwater in that area by promoting it to go into the ground. And then if it does raise up, elevate up enough where the ground can't handle it anymore, it'll be discharged to the lake.
Hey Brennan, this is Bob Lacourse here. Couple, couple of questions there for you. So one of your piece of paper I read about you, you said the paper that you're going to use is permeable. Can you talk about that a little bit?
They have, yeah, that's a good question.
And also the, your runoff, I am concerned about that because they're so close to the lake. And why is the south side gutter going to go into any kind of rubble or anything to break that water up? It's a straight shot to the lake. So this might basically.
Yeah.
Right. The, the paver, we've had back and forth with Mark quite a bit talking about the papers we're going to use. They, the, all pavers are, or should I say, most pavers are permeable and they allow absorption through them into the stone base that they sit on. Plan is to have like a brick type paver here, which has about a quarter inch gap between it, which is then filled with a, with a stone dust, so allow the water to pass down into it, into the base and then into the ground. Uh, they haven't selected the paver yet and I think it's going to be driven a lot by cost. And then as far as that south gutter on the house, we really have no room to, to try to push that into the ground with a, with an infiltration trench. Also, if we did something there with an infiltration trench, you know, we're relatively close to the south neighbor. And they, you know, I don't want to cause problems for anyone on another, you know, another property by, because their house is so close with an infiltration practice.
It was always that close?
Yes.
It was just interesting, the north side, but not the south.
Yeah, just the proximity of that house on the south.
Yeah, I mean, this is Lance with MRB Group. I mean, looking at the, the plans, the only other option would be to sheet float it across, across that property on that south side. And I don't, you know, maybe with the landscaping as shown, the existing trees, maybe there's a way to infiltrate it that way.
Well, you can see by the spot elevations there is that the, the south property is actually lower. So we can sheet float onto the south property, but I don't think they'll like that.
Right. What's it currently doing right now, Brennan, on that side?
Um, well, there, there's no downspouts on the house yet after they got done. So I can't really tell you exactly what it's doing. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark. You know, I, like Karen said, there's a lot, there's quite a bit of ponding around.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of pooling.
It was almost a lake.
Sandy.
I'm very concerned about the runoff into the lake and the kind of runoff that we're going to be getting. It's very close to the road. There's very few trees out in front of the house that will, you know, stop anything. It's not exactly, uh, from, from, from the road, it's not, it's not a landscaped property.
Well, I mean, you are putting the, the gutters and downspouts into a leader and so that will not be splashing onto the property anymore. I'm not sure how, does the grade go from east to west? Does the garage area in that part of the lot drain across Sandy Beach and on to the house property, house side of the street?
Yeah, it does, yeah. The Eastlake Road is higher than Sandy Beach generally.
That could be obviously contributing some runoff to the house side.
Right.
But, well, uh, the infiltration system, I was trying to understand how that's going to work. I, I realize, assuming you've got the right subsoil and everything, have you done any geo, geotech testing, soil testing at all out there to see if you've got the right subsoil for an infiltration system?
No, I mean, uh, we have, and it's pretty consistent throughout the area. It's a, it's a clay loam. I mean, it's, it's, it's the, the, um, one of the best practices we can do, though, given the situation we're in. You know, there's no room for a rain garden between the house and the lake. There's no, there's no real room for anything, right? So can't even put rain barrels on the edge of the, the building because there's, they're in the, the sidewalk.
Yeah. Uh, speaking of landscaping, uh, do you want to tell us what you're doing out on the lakeside regarding the retaining wall and some of the shrubbery you intend to put there?
Yeah, I mean, the, it's, it's planned as to have ornamental grasses along the lake wall. You know, those would be like your rushes. They'll go up to be about three to four feet tall, you know, you know, uh, be an ornamental feature. Then along the south of the patio will be arborvitae. You can't really see it. And I can tell you right now, there's actually already conflict on these plans, which I'll fix. They're going to be right where that storm pipe is, so I'll have to fix that. But, um, they'll be along the south side of the property or south side of the patio.
And the existing ash tree will remain to the, to the north.
Yeah. It is healthy.
Anybody else on the board have any questions, concerns on the shoreline guideline aspects of this application?
Yeah, this is Brian, not specifically on the guidelines. I do have, I do want to just touch base on that, uh, the gutter thing, but we can come back to it.
Okay, let's come back to the gutter thing, Ryan.
Okay, thanks. Uh, I guess my main concern with that, it's a tough, it's a tough lot to the north there. But I think the issue that I have with, with the gutter going right into the lake is it's a brand new asphalt roof. And there's going to be asphalt stuff going into the lake. And that's why, you know, something that we can explore as a town is maybe we start requiring steel roofs in the future. And I don't know how to mitigate that now, um, going into, um, the lake. But there's no way for us to settle anything out, is there Brennan? I mean, there's nothing we can put that would stop. It's gonna, it's gonna directly pollute the lake. It just does. That's just the way asphalt roofing is.
Yeah, I'm going to have to not vote for this then because I can't vote for anything that's absolutely ahead of time we know is going to pollute the lake. The lake is in such tough shape, such a tipping point.
You know, actually, I'm just looking at this and I'm thinking of something that we might be able to do. And it's going to require some hand digging is take that south leader and run it along the south side of the house towards Sandy Beach and tie it into the storm system and wrap it all the way around. It's kind of the roundabout way to get the water to the lake, but that's possible. You know, we'll have, still have to hand dig between the houses for sure.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest if there's a way to tie it into the front of the house where the storm sewer is.
Yeah.
We can ask where the previous runoff went?
Yeah, well, it was all splashed to grade and then it all was tributary to the lake. I mean.
So how is this any different?
The only thing is it's a direct pipe, so that's the only difference.
Oh.
They, they had direct pipe before, Brennan.
Oh, there you go. No difference. We're just doing this in good faith. We're putting the infiltration trench in, in good faith.
And you. That's all I'm saying, Brennan, is if you're doing it in good faith on that side, you should tie in the south side then.
I don't think that'll be an issue. Are you okay with that, Mark?
Brennan, the, the downspout, if we take the gutter and pitch it the, in the other direction on the south side, downspout would be about in the middle of the house. So that the, the hand digging, the distance from. So that the hand digging, the distance from where that downspout would be if we pitched the gutter the other way is going to be half the distance to that.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, that works, that works great.
And that helps you with that arborvitae conflict too, so.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you could almost even, I mean, you could almost, if you don't mind, pipe above ground there. You could almost do a four inch, you know, and just pitch it right at the, at the bottom of that white. I'm just looking at the, at the bottom of that white siding. It almost goes straight north, you know, that might be a better solution to get the water out of there too, right? You know what I mean?
Yeah, we'll do that. That sounds like a good plan.
Okay, Karen?
I like that much better.
All right, so we're ready to move on this, maybe Chuck, huh?
Okay, Lance, did you get all of that? Because he'll be coming back to you to follow up on your review letter. So would you please make sure that what we talked about here is covered? Thank you, Lance, wherever you are. Okay.
Yeah, I got you. Thank you.
Okay, good guy. All right.
We are going to be removing that concrete pad right there too, right?
Yes, yes.
So, so I guess, does that, does that mean that actually the amount of impervious material on this service area was going to be reduced on this property?
Yes, yes.
So that's good.
But the town's still classified papers as impervious, but we're working on that, right Eric?
Even though it's really not, yeah, okay.
Okay. Mark or Suzanne, do you have any, anything you want to add to the discussion?
No, but we do want to thank you for taking the time to present in this manner. I know it's not exactly ideal, but we do appreciate it. And we're glad to help with some resolve with the drainage pitching back the other way, so it doesn't pollute the lake as well.
Good. Well, I think it'll be a nice project when it's done. We didn't look at any views from the lake of the house, but it's a, it's a nice looking home. And I think what you're proposing here will certainly add to it. Let me, before we go to vote, just go through the checklist. Okay, we discussed the shoreline guidelines, so John, make sure that it's adequately noted that we discussed it and we're okay with it. The ZBA did give their variance on the 21st. There was some back and forth with the New York State Parks Program, but they were okay with what was happening. ECB, I didn't see anything from ECB, so I assume they had no comments. We talked about Kevin Olvany not getting back to us. Karen, would you still like Kevin in the loop on this thing at all?
No, I think, I think the ECB ought to just see it real quickly and we could put that as a condition that they just, you know, comment or not.
Okay.
Because that's important.
Again, the County Planning Board recommended denial. So we're into super majority territory. And we have Lance's letter of the second, which is very thorough. And Brendan, Brendan had responded to that on the eighth. So I think the engineers are at least talking to each other. So does anyone else out in the audience have any questions, concerns? I know there were emails to the, to Eric and to the ZBA from the neighbors, and they were both in favor on the north and south side. So unless there's someone in the audience who would like to speak, we will move on.
I don't see anyone raising their hand right now.
Okay, hearing none. I will entertain a motion on the seeker.
I'd like to make a motion to, for, to CPN 20-14. Let's pass the seeker and the site plan at the same time, is that okay?
Great idea. Are you getting tired, Ryan?
Move 20-014. Mark's Engineering from Mark and Suzanne Laish, 3516 Sandy Beach Drive. The seeker resolution of type two action. And also the Laish 20-014 site plan resolution with five conditions. Is that correct, Lance?
Correct, as written. Yep.
And that includes the whole issue with gutter drainage, Lance?
My understanding, I most certainly can add it. My understanding, based on conversation, I thought was that it would be addressed as part of the revisions to the plans, addressing MRB's comments, and then resubmitted, showing that the storm sewer will be tied in, as opposed to.
And reviewed by the ECB when they do resubmit. Yep.
Yeah, let me just ask again that, Karen. We're going to have to go through another, wait till the ECB meeting next month, or can we, is there any administrative process here?
The ECB's comments aren't binding anyways. I'm not sure why we would. We go through all the applications that the ECB would have seen at their next meeting. So if they have anything to say, they can, but I don't think it's appropriate to bring it back to the planning board. Just so everyone's aware, their meeting was canceled. Essentially, that's why this didn't go before, it was canceled due to the COVID-19 epidemic.
Gotcha.
I don't think there's anything to come back to us. I just think Karen just wants to make sure that they've seen it and had an opportunity to, to comment on it.
Yeah, if they can help you in any way with some of these technical issues, that'd be great. I mean, I think we've got it, but they're very helpful.
Maybe, maybe as part of the existing conditions, Eric can send it out to the members of the ECB. And if they have comments, they can be incorporated in Lance's sign off.
Yep.
Makes sense?
Yeah, and there's suggestions, as you say, they're not hard and fast, but there's suggestions and they may have something that could help.
So before you sign off on it, Lance, make sure Eric has, has gotten any feedback that's presented from the ECB. Makes sense?
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a, two motions from Brian. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I will, Gary will second both of those.
Okay. Further discussion on either? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Okay, the record shows it is 5-0, so we met the super majority requirement. Okay, thanks guys, girls.
Thank you. Do you mind if we take a very brief recess? As you can tell on your screen, my computer is running a little low on battery.
Oh.
And it wanted to kick us out.
All right.
You got to plug that in, dude.
Yeah.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Is that Eric leaving the room? My gosh.
Eric Cooper has left the room.
All right, we got our friends from DeMarco sitting and waiting out there.
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
We're here, we're here, thank you for hosting this.
Soon as Eric gets back, we'll get on with it.
Well, maybe let them start their spiel.
Their spiel, okay. I know you have a presentation that you need to the ZBA, and I think you want to try to cover both. Well, let's look at both applications sort of as a group for both the renovations to the clubhouse and also the final for phase two. So I know there's somewhat interrelated, so you can sort of address both as you go through this.
Thank you, thank you, we're happy.
Can you put your PowerPoint on here, or do you have to wait for it to come back?
We have to wait for Eric, he's the driver.
I thought so.
We can go from the plans, we can start with the plans we have.
That looks familiar.
Yeah, so, so there it is. And if you want me to start, Mr. Chairman, I can.
And speak, is this Greg?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, we can, Greg, you have the floor.
Okay, great. Well, again, thanks very much for, for continuing the town's commitment to moving these projects forward, even in this manner. I know it's, I know it's challenging, but as developers, we certainly appreciate you continuing to move these projects. Allow me to introduce the players that are here tonight. We've got Paul Calucci from the DeMarco Group, the Vice President of Construction and Development. We also have Mike Bogaszewski from BME Associates as our civil engineer. And then myself, I'm Greg Forster, I'm the Vice President of Affordable Housing Development. So I know it's been a long night, Brian, so we'll try to be fast. And we'll try to cover these slides as, as quickly as we can. Looks like my screen just went to.
Yeah, I'm having a connectivity issue here at the moment.
Okay, okay. So Paul and I will, will go through the slide deck and then we'll be available for, obviously, any questions that you have. We're also, as the Mr. Chairman suggested, we'll talk about phase one, our expansion for the phase one clubhouse two. But I'll, I'll continue here without the slide, without the slide deck at this point. But you might remember that we came in front of the board about three years ago. And we had four phases of 96 units each, totaling 384. Phase one was completed last year. We were fully occupied by the end of July of 2019. We have a strong waiting list. And we're here again to talk about phase two, which is 96 more units. And phase one, the clubhouse expansion. Three years ago, the, the board wanted us to talk to you a little bit about the difference between affordable housing and subsidized housing. I'm going to whip through this slide, and if you have more questions later, we can talk about it. But you might remember that subsidized housing really talks about rental, rental assistance. And residents pay 30% of their monthly income and the government picks up the balance. Affordable housing is a little bit different in that you still need to be income qualified, but everybody pays the same amount of rent. So if one bedrooms are 575, everybody pays 575. Or if three bedrooms are 850, everybody pays that. You have to be income qualified to move in, and you also have to show income to be able to pay those rent levels. So how do we do it? We do it with low income housing tax credits. And this is an actual section 42 of the IRS code. It was developed back in 1984. New York State Homes and Community Renewal, they are the managers of this program in New York State. And the way we do it is we sell the tax credits to private investors. That's how we raise equity, and it's typically 75% of our sources that go into this deal are raised through low income housing tax credits. Like I said, New York State Homes and Community Renewal develops, what, am I still on?
Yeah.
I can hear you.
Okay. They develop what's called a qualified allocation plan. Essentially, it's like a rubric, and it's highly competitive. About 130 applications come into the project, come into the state project wide. And somewhere between 30 to 35 are awarded each year. There are program thresholds that we have to comply with, but there are also opportunities to have competitive advantages in this rubric that I've talked about. And from an owner's perspective and a DeMarco Group perspective, we're, we commit ourselves to not only affordable housing, but to this particular project that we're required to have a compliance period of 15 years and then a 25-year extended use period that we have to comply with. So this is not, you know, a project that we just take lightly. We're, we're in it for the long haul. There is a regulatory agreement that we have to comply with that regulates rent, that regulates income, cash flow, and how we operate the program. And then there is annual compliance reporting that homes and community renewal need, need to see investors who buy the tax credits, lenders, and obviously the town too. So we're highly regulated when it comes to this particular affordable housing apartment community. I'm going to flop the slides, not that you have them quite yet, but I'm going to flop over at least the presentation to Paul, to Paul Calucci.
Thanks, Greg. Obviously, I'm a little at a loss here because most of my slides are visual. And presuming that Eric is working on that. You know, obviously, Greg did a good job just describing where we were with phase one, similar program that we're pursuing for phase two. I presume that, that most of the board, I think it's a lot of familiar faces, if not all, were, were with us when we did the preliminary overall. So the, the goal here is that we are developing the second phase, very consistent with what you folks saw at preliminary overall. It is in the same location that phase two was contemplated. And we are essentially developing a very similar program, similar style buildings, same look, same feel. The only change that we're making here for phase two are some additional energy goals that the project is pursuing that Greg will go into. But if you have seen the plans through the drops that the town has provided to you, you know what Creekview Apartments looks like phase one. We are developing the exact same thing. We, we, I'll let Greg talk about what we're doing in addition to what we did for phase one, but it's certainly exciting stuff and leading and innovative stuff that we're pursuing.
I can, I can roll right into that now, if you'd like, Paul.
Yep.
So yeah, we wanted to, I, I mentioned earlier about the competitive advantage, and we're really talking about energy goals here that really kind of separates ourselves from other projects across the state. And as you might remember, Creekview Phase One was a net zero ready project and also was the first project in, outside of the five boroughs of New York City that was passive house certified. The first affordable housing project that was passive house certified. We're looking to not only hit that mark, but even go further with that mark. And this is the, this is the slide that we're on at this point. And, and the project has already, Creekview Apartment Space Two has already won two awards, essentially, an award and incentive. It has won the NYSRDA Building of Excellence Program Award for a million dollars for hard costs to develop the project. It has also been awarded $317,000 if we can achieve net zero. And net zero is really producing and generating our own power that we need. That's what we're looking to do here. So not only be net zero ready, but net zero and including this passive house certification. So how do we do that? Well, we're going to be doing that with, with solar and geothermal technology. And, and, and what we need to, and what we had requested from the variance, from the zoning board, were two modifications, or there were one modification because of two reasons. And one was the solar and the solar orientation that we needed to, we needed to move the buildings to have a north and south spine. Six of them did have that type of orientation, but six did not. We need to capture the best solar gain in the early morning to the late afternoon, to the late evening. And the only way to do that is put solar panels on both sides of the roof, so we can capture the entire day. The other thing that we needed to do is create a larger mechanical room so we can house a common project paid utility element. So we're, we're, we're moving away from everybody having their own heating source inside their apartment, their own hot water heater inside their apartment, and moving towards common project paid utility. So by doing that, we needed to create a larger mechanical room. We feel we can do that more cost effectively. It's going to cost less on a initial, initial capital investment. And then from an operational standpoint, it's going to cost less too. And there'll be less inconvenience for us going into the units, to the residents' units. And Eric, you can, you can move to the next one. So this is phase two, or phase one buildings. It's not a rendering, this is actual. It's not a rendering. This is actual pictures of Creekview Phase One. Again, ninety-six units will be carrying this color scheme throughout, throughout Phase Two of the, of the red, the beige, and the green throughout the project. So it will look very similar, if not identical, to, Phase Two will look identical to Phase One. At Phase One, as you know, we have a clubhouse. And it was suited for ninety-six units. In the clubhouse, we have a community room, we have a fitness room, computer lab, a common, a common, a common room, a maintenance shop, and an office. And HCR has certain design guidelines that they require. It can't be too big, it can't be too small, for all these different elements. We're at our max when it comes to one project at the community room itself. So we are looking to, for a Phase One site plan approval, to have two additions. One is to the clubhouse or to the community room, looking to add about five hundred and sixty square feet to the, to the community space. And then also to the maintenance shop, doubling that space to house more snow removal equipment, lawn care, inventory supply, and things like that. Ideally, it would have been nice if we could have built a larger clubhouse right from the get-go, but HCR would not have supported that. And their design limitations really restricted us. So Eric, you can go to the next slide. And again, that's another picture of Phase One. And that slide there, the front elevation, you can go one more there. Perfect. So this is the mechanical room, front elevation. On one side of the building, the top slide, or the top building, you can see where the patio and the balcony has been pushed to, has been kind of pushed back, pushed out a little bit. That's where the mechanical room is going to go. The other side will look like the one below. The one below is identical to the ones, both sides at Phase One. So there's one side that's a little bit different, and it protrudes out a little bit, and that's why we needed the variance. And Paul will talk a little bit about that. And I'll turn it back over to Paul at this point.
Thanks, Greg. So I'm going to go real quick. So you guys were all part of the developing the bulk area regs when we set this up at preliminary overall. And as Greg said, we were at the zoning board last week. We were successful in receiving the variance. And the only thing that we were unable to comply with was that setback from the building to the edge of pavement where fifteen feet was required. We had, due to the new orientation of the buildings and this slightly larger mechanical room, sought relief on that, and we were successful. And we can, we can show you that in the site plan, which we have a snippet on an upcoming slide. But overall, we're complying with, with the bulk area regs with the exception of that fifteen feet to pavement. Next slide, Eric. So we put a bunch of infrastructure in at preliminary overall. We put a dedicated road in, which is called Woodland Park Circle. That goes from County Road Ten and loops back around. We cooperated and did a public improvement project in cooperation with the town of Canadagua. Water was brought up the west side of County Road Ten to a certain distance by the town forces. We picked it up and carried it from Recreation Drive all the way up into our project. Then the town has since picked up and carried it further north. We installed public sewer along the west side of County Road Ten, dedicated to the Canadagua Lake County Sewer District. And then we put a whole bunch of stormwater infrastructure in that will, majority of it will support this phase a little bit going to a future stormwater expansion area. Next one. So here's a slide just shows graphically. You can see in the highlighted green and blue where the sewer infrastructure and water was put in. Next slide. And then a little bit more detail. Again, we put in a pump station to service all four phases in the dedicated sewer gravity running down along to County Road Ten. We will be extending the sewer that was put in from Phase One up into Phase Two as part of this next phase. Next slider. So this is showing water, which we met with the Water Superintendent Jim Fletcher prior to actually designing this and talked to him about different ways that we could supply water for this project. Obviously, coming off the dedicated main in Woodland Park Circle. And what we're doing in this phase is just slightly different than what we did for Phase One. For Phase One, we had one connection to the public main, came into the clubhouse building, master meter, master backflow, and then came out of that. And all the water supplying Phase One buildings is private. In this phase, it was preferred by the town, in our conversations with Jim, to have eliminate a hot box or any type of meter vault and actually put in dedicated water and then valves and connections for each building where there'd be backflow and metering in each building. And that's what you're seeing here. The yellow is showing the proposed dedicated water. And then we have, our engineer has designed connections to each building. The water main would eventually extend to the north for Phase Three and then loop back around and connect to the existing dedicated main on Woodland Park Circle. Next phase, or next slide, please, Eric.
Sorry, again, connectivity issues running into, I apologize.
Oh, no problem. So while you're, while you're doing that, it's a picture of you. Is that the Wanamaker Cup? So similarly, the next slide was going to show sewer that extends off of the existing dedicated sewer that we put in. It was all planned for, and we're following suit, which is what you saw for preliminary overall. I go into a little bit more with, we had done a traffic study at overall. There was no mitigation required. We don't anticipate any, any difference in trip generation. All of the sewer loads and water demand is consistent with what we had forecasted for, for the preliminary overall and similar to Phase One. While Eric is working on getting that back, I think you guys are very familiar and comfortable with the overall project. We did get comments from, from various agencies, including the town engineer and the sewer district, the Water Superintendent, and the Fire Marshal. We responded to all those in writing and sent those back to the town. And then we did receive some comments that Eric sent over yesterday from the planning board. And I had responded to those yesterday and sent them back. I don't know if the board members had received those responses. But, you know, in the interest of keeping this as brief as possible, let's, let's just move right to any questions you guys have. And Greg and I and Mike, who's our engineer of record, are happy to answer them as best we can.
Thank you, Paul. I'll open it up to the board.
I was just wondering a very practical question, which is you have, this, this project is needed now more than ever, by the way. But I was just wondering, with, with your rentals, are you having any trouble because people are out of work?
Yeah, this is Greg Forster. We, we didn't experience too much in April. We are starting to hear from some residents that they could use a little help, a little bit of time. And we're happy to accommodate that, you know. So there, there are some people that have reached out to us. I wouldn't say it's a lot. But, and I apologize, I don't quite know the number, but I just know that some residents have reached out and said, hey, I can only afford this right now. Can you, can you put that off? And of course, we're trying to accommodate them as best we can.
Good.
Hey, this is Ryan. What's the geothermal component?
That, that is HVAC. And that, that's where we're going to have our HVAC. I, I'm not an expert at this. I apologize. I should have had the, the expert on for that. But that's where, that's how we're going to heat and cool the building.
I have it in my house. It's great.
Yeah, I guess I understand. Yeah, I understand the HVAC. But like, where is the geothermal thermal going to go on the site?
Yeah, sure. So Paul, did you want to touch on that?
Greg, if you're comfortable, you spent a lot of time talking with the engineers. Feel free. If you want me to take it, I can.
Feel free.
So Ryan, there will be a well field for each building. The, the load has been calculated by the engineers. EC four B, who was our MEP engineers for the first phase, is with us again for this phase. They, they size the well field based upon the heating and cooling demand of the building. And likely, they will be in the parking lot is, is more than likely where we're going to see a lot of them below the parking lot. They can't go in easement areas. The, you know, the driller that we're working with and the consultant who's doing that will layer on top of the approved civil plans where these wellfields will be located.
Paul, and the dimensions of those wellfields are what by what?
Typically, probably about, depth is all based upon a thermal conductivity or thermal resistivity test that they'll do. So they actually have to go out and physically drill down. The sooner they get into rock, the better. And the fortunate thing for us in this area, we get into rock pretty quick. So they want to get down into deeper soils. I'm guessing we're looking at somewhere between forty to seventy-five feet here. It's all based on, you know, linear footage of, of a wellfield that they put in. They're probably on a diamond pattern, you know, five feet apart. And we're thinking that there's going to be three to four wellfield, or three to four wells per building. So if you're talking about an area that's going to take up about, say, twelve by twelve outside of each building.
Okay. And these are all located in the private driveway areas, paved areas. There's nothing in the public.
Correct. Can't go in the right-of-way, and we can't put them in easement areas because should any of the owners of those facilities, once we dedicate them, have to maintain, they don't want to be digging through a.
Are the wellfields delineated on the plans?
They aren't, they aren't at this time. Or Mike, are they? Have we shown them?
No, they're not at this point.
Is that a? Is that something that's determined in the field, once they get out there, where they're going to be, rather than putting them on a plan? Or would it be part of your, your as-built or record plans once they're submitted?
Hundred percent would be part of as-built and record plans. And typically, we would, we would advance this portion of the design a little bit further after site plan approval and as part of the building permit submission. And at that point, we can layer them on the approved civil plans for submission along with the building permit.
Yeah, this is Lance. Yeah, no, I concur with that. What I would only suggest is that no be added just to confirm exactly what it is that you said, Paul, that those fields are not to be located in easement areas and not within the right-of-way areas.
Yep, yeah, understood.
Well, yes, I would agree that they're typically shown after the fact because they're in the field decision-making that's going on.
Okay, just so note, Lance, that the record plans would show those locations once, once installed. Anyone else on the board?
I have a, I have a few, few questions. So first kind of question was, I've taken a lot of look, or I've tried to study as much a little bit about parking. And I want to make sure we've got adequate parking. I know you've got a few areas there where you've proposed some landbank parking. So if those are not executed, not built out, I want to make sure we've got adequate parking. Particularly buildings seventeen and eighteen, kind of to me seemed like, I wasn't sure there was going to be adequate parking around those, those two buildings. And then I guess my question, in terms of really understanding this a little better is, have we done a kind of a review of the parking that's going on in Phase One right now? Are we finding that the parking that we planned for was adequate? Is it tight? Do we have a lot of spaces left over? And how is that reality going into the planning for parking in Phase Two?
Thank you, Gary. I'm going to let Mike talk specific technically about the parking. But let me answer your question on building seventeen and eighteen. Building seventeen and eighteen is our one-bedroom apartments, so they are smaller units. So we feel that the parking should be adequate there. And speaking about Phase One, we have, we have plenty of parking. We haven't had any complaints about not enough parking spaces or, you know, someone's in my parking space or anything. The parking has been very adequate, even during challenging snow removal as, as well. So that answers to your questions. Maybe, Mike, you can speak a little bit more technically.
Yeah, if I can touch on like, on the parking quantity and, and the landbank parking spaces. Basically, even though we revised the layout for the different building orientations, we left the number of proposed parking spaces the same as the approved preliminary plans. The required number of spaces is two spaces per unit. However, with the preliminary plans, we provided a ratio of one point seven spaces per unit. And that's what's still provided here. And then the remaining required spaces are proposed as landbank. Just because through the preliminary review process, it was, we reviewed the parking like needed based on, based on Greg and Paul's needs for, for the buildings. And as Greg stated, it seems to be working out well in section one already.
Okay, and that's the same, the same strategy and model, I guess, that you used for Phase One as well.
Correct, yeah, correct.
All right, so one can at least, I guess, assume we've got adequate, certainly adequate parking on Phase One that, that that's likely to be the same on Phase Two, okay?
Yep.
Another kind of, I don't know if this is a technical kind of a question, but when I look at the streets, the street layout basically there, you've got the, kind of the main drive, I guess, going, going off of Woodland Park Circle is what now Creekview Drive. And when I, when I look at the overall, Creekview Drive actually is going to loop around all the way into Phase Three, yeah, Phase Three. And then, you know, come loop back up again into Woodland Park Circle. That, that whole, that's going to be another kind of a little loop. I'm wondering about the naming of that little, I don't know what we want to call it, but it's a little extension that goes in front of.
Yeah.
That was tied to building seventeen and eighteen. You've got it also labeled Creekview Drive. And I wonder if that's appropriate and for, is that a temporary? Because the other section of Creekview Drive is not done yet, or is that going to cause a concern for emergency vehicles or something? Do we have to name that something different, or that's kind of where?
I think we did.
Yeah, Gary, that, that's a good catch. We, we numbered all these apartments and labeled all the street names in advance of building this whole thing out with Chris Jensen. I believe that, that that street's supposed to be Park Lane. And, and Mike, that's my fault for not sharing that with you, but I believe, but that's a good catch, Gary. That, that is supposed to be Park Lane, and there's a set of numbers that's already assigned to that street. So good catch. Thank you.
That's an easy fix for us, too.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good to get that on there. Okay. And then I guess the, well, two other, two other things. One is, I seem to remember when we did the overall preliminary, we were going to propose there was going to be some trail system that was maybe in the, in the. I I seem to remember when we did the overall preliminary, we were going to propose there was going to be some trail system that was maybe in the in the back portions of all of this. Is that still going on? And is there any access to that trail system that you have to build out as part of phase two? I wasn't sure. I I saw the access or anything like that going out to the to a trail system.
Yeah, Gary, I'll I'll jump in on that one as part of the overall. And then as part of phase one, we talked about having trails as part of the community. And ultimately, I think we we agreed and we put a note on the plans. And we're still due to to finalize this for phase one. When we finished phase one last fall, we we were, we were racing to get stabilization. We 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 had not had full stabilization or germination across the site. But the plan is to, as as we are maintaining the grounds, there'll be certain areas around the periphery of the property that are mowed at the same frequency as all the land in between the units. And then we will mow paths around the perimeter, around the the stormwater treatment facilities using the the pond access drives. And then along the the buffer area to the west of the buildings mowed path. And we agreed that we would, we'd work with the town as to where those should go. And that is, that's the plan to finish that for phase one and then carry that up along for phase two. So and then similarly, when we be build phase three, we'll continue that up to the north further.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess my last comment, there were several comments and I think and suggestions from Ontario County Sewer District, I think, in terms of maybe redesigning or relaying out some of the sewer connections. Did you receive those comments? And are you in in agreement with that?
Yeah, we we did. We responded to those and and BME will continue to work with the sewer district. There, the main one was, in order to get the the Woodland Park Circle in, we did put a section of of gravity sewer in purposely to 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 support this phase. So it was under the road, so we didn't have to open cut the road or bore under it with a sewer. And the alignment of that is not going to be one hundred percent able to avoid a new manhole that we weren't planning. So we're we're going to have to install a new manhole to make that connection so that we can avoid any alignment issues. That's that's the only major item they had. The rest of it was pretty minor technical stuff that we're confident that BME will be able to work through with the sewer district.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's that's all I got.
Thanks, Gary. Ryan, you had some questions on the trail in the past. You you want to bring those up or do you want to? Did you get them answered?
Well, no, I think it's an important conversation, and I I certainly support this project. And I think it's a super value added project to our community. And it's so progressive, especially the the solar and the geothermal. I mean, that is just, it's awesome to have those utilities all together as one. It's like super progressive. But something that I I remember we had a detailed conversation. I know Doug Finch was in on the conversations with Greg and and, you know, others. And originally, for at least at least Amanda and for Bob, of course, you know, the new members, you know, like when the conversation started, the outlet, the Kandagwa outlet is, in my opinion, a super untapped resource for future development. And we talked at a lot, great length, about a trail system that would go from basically Kandagwa Lake all the way up to Ontario County Fairgrounds. And so part of our strategy was to at least try to get all the applicants that come before us, including the fairgrounds and any easement. We started the conversation off quite some time ago about asking this project to construct a trail. And it was way too expensive, like to to ask an applicant, you know, to try to keep costs down was going to be significant, significant dollars down the wetland there. And so at the time, there's a tool that we can have which removes we every, every unit requires a thousand dollar payment in lieu of fee for our park system. And we have flexibility where we can remove that fee and then in exchange for flexibility. So the the trail construction is what we were hoping for along the outlet. And recognizing that that was just not doable, then we we transitioned or pivoted to a conversation about a trail easement where maybe in the future, if we had access or a trail easement that the town could partner or somehow get a trail established, that's more of a global community vision trail. And so, but the applicant decided not to go that path. We we continue to receive, you know, a lot of money, a thousand dollars per unit where that we're thankful for that goes into our park system, our rec system. But the trail, I do remember, Gary, like you mentioned, I do remember having it. We said, well, we're going to talk about trails every phase. So I'm glad to hear that come up. I'd like to advocate that that trail around the Stormwater Detention Basin kind of it gets finalized. We don't lose sight of that. I never remember really talking about a grass path trail. I I don't think we ever came to any consensus on the surface of the trail system. Because with all of the issues we've had in off the middle set Cheshire, I don't think we would have agreed to that right away. But I'd like to, you know, propose that we revisit the idea of of the easement for the the overall preliminary. And maybe put that back on the table. I know it's something to consider. It doesn't cost anything. In fact, it would be an a value, a value added benefit. And and especially at a time right now where people are stuck in their houses and trying to get out in nature, might be a value added benefit in the future to have a trail there. We're not asking them to create a trail. We're not asking them to pay for it. We're just asking simply for the easement from the applicant to the town so that the town can go in there and construct a trail sometime in the future. We don't even have money for that. It's something that we ask people to do with sidewalk easements a lot. And it's just something I'd like to continue to bring up for the applicants. You know, that's, that's kind of my thing, and I think it's important. I just kind of want to keep it on the table and at least keep it the conversation going on that.
Trying to recall on the phase one, I know the discussion of actually building the trail was sort of forgotten because of the the cost. And you're correct there, Ryan. But did the DeMarco commit to at least provide an easement? And if they did commit, did they provide, did they actually record an easement for phase one as part of that? I'm trying to recall that. It's my old mind's losing it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I can, I can maybe jump in on that a little bit. I lost the screen other than I can see you. So we we did, as 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 Ryan mentioned, we spoke at length. We we had a very healthy conversation around the 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 land that was going to remain that wasn't part of the actual physical development of the community. Obviously, there's, there's wetlands and flood plain. And we talked about, is there value to the town for that land? And is there consideration that the town would be willing to make to allow us to waive that recreation fee per unit, as Ryan alluded to, or reduce it? And we we went back and forth on that, and the town decided that that was not something that they they could do or were willing to do. They wanted to get that thousand dollars per unit, invest that in their parks, master plan and and other projects that they do. We also talked at that same time about, you know, DeMarco willing to give community wide access to these trails and actually put some parking areas within the community. As, as you heard Greg say, and and Gary correctly was was questioning, do we have a surplus of parking? And we believe that we have ample parking, but we were going to create little trailhead or nodes in the community where the general public could come and park and walk some of these trails and get access back to the Kandagwa outlet, which is a resource. And it was decided that that there would be no reduction or or consideration given for reducing the the parks and rec fee per unit for that. And we concluded the town, the this board and the applicant that, okay, we will, we will keep this community a private community, aside from the the dedicated road. And we will pay that fee per unit for each phase as we go forward. Now, we, DeMarco Group is is a community minded developer. We are a hundred percent open to working with the town if there is some master plan that the town wants to pursue for community wide access along the Kandagwa outlet and easement. Well, well, it seems like it it may not cost anything to give. There is value to any easement that a landowner gives. I'm sure Mr. Nadler can can weigh in on that. I'm not prepared to say that we would give that as a condition of this phase. But I could promise you that it as a landowner of all four phases, we would consider if the town had some plan that they wanted to pursue, we would, we would be there at the table, working with them to help them for realize that. So that door is always open for access along the outlet. We had not planned to give an easement. I I can't promise that as part of this phase. But, you know, overall, we're, we're always looking to be a good partner with the town of Kandagwa.
A question for Eric. Does the town's master plan for trails propose or anticipate any trail along the outlet adjacent to this property or on this property?
I don't think it says anything about a specific trail. It does mention, though, using the outlet as an asset. So, yeah, I don't think it has any specific mention of a trail per se.
Which I I guess makes it a little tougher to to sort for us to put our foot down and hold our ground as to requiring an easement because our own master plan really doesn't address the the need for a a trail in that area. And that's probably where where we were, you know, a couple of years ago when we did phase one. So that's, I guess, sort of the conclusions we draw. And maybe I answered my own question.
I would also say that, you know, if the Parks and Rec Master Plan says, you know, have a trail and the applicant provides a trail, aren't they kind of providing that town line recreation that might necessitate a waiting on the Parks and Rec fee?
No, it's not a one for one. If they provide. And I don't think trails under New York State law qualify as space for park and recreation in terms of the in lieu of space for parks and recreation clause in New York State Town Law. If you'll require, if you'll recall, New York State Town Law requires that before a site plan or subdivision is approved, the planning board will require or may require area on the site plan to be set aside dedicated to the town for parks and recreation. That's to account for the increase in population. Presumably, the parks existing in the town need to be augmented. Since that usually isn't feasible, here also encompasses a provision that says, in lieu of that space on the site plan, the town planning board can charge a park and rec fee. Separate in the part separate from that, the planning board can, as a condition of approval, require an easement for a trail, just like they would for an easement for sidewalks or an easement for a storm sewer or a roadway. And that's a discussion that can be had at at any point during this project. And it's, it was started with great cooperation from the DeMarco Group. And I remember meeting with them and Doug this issue. That it is not necessarily a one for one. Just like if they paid a park and recreation fee, it would not take away their requirement to provide an easement for sidewalks. That being said, DeMarco has entered in good faith into these conversations, even explored the possibility of constructing it for the town. As I recall, at the time that the the town calculated it would cost a couple million bucks to build it because the town has to spend a wage prevailing wage rates. And DeMarco wouldn't. I think DeMarco, you guys came in at, you know, somewhere around half a million dollars it would cost you to build it, which was still out of the realm of possibility. If I can just interject here, you know, and 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 I don't think that this is a bad conversation, and I certainly don't want to to beat this horse. This is an awesome project, man. If you go by there, that project looks awesome. We're providing good homes. It's a good community development project. I just don't want to lose the conversation because DeMarco was awesome. Like, we had a great conversation about how we can make this work. It didn't work out in phase one. And it seems like it's not going to really work out in phase two. Hey, we got two phases left, boys.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah.
Two more. And I ain't giving up on it. And we can, the best project in the state. Like, let's small, let's kill it. You know what I mean? Like, we could do something cool. And I'm at least thankful, Paul, to hear you say that, that we can continue to bring it up. It would, it would require a change of the overall amended, which I bet we're going to see something in phase three and phase four, too, you know. So I think it's good.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to hold anyone to anything right now, but let's just keep it on the docket.
Yeah, we agree with that, Ryan. We're, we're a hundred percent open to sitting down with the town, sitting down with the Parks and Rec people from the town and looking at where your goals are. And if there's a way that we can cooperate and facilitate, it's going to, you know, enhance the community that resources is a great resource along the outlet. And we're not going anywhere. Like you said, we do, we do want to obtain, you know, a final site plan approval for phase two. It's important, as Greg hinted at, the competitiveness of these applications statewide. And it's very important that we do get that site plan approval so that we can strengthen our application for this next round of funding. And that would put us in a position to be under construction, hopefully, this year. So that definitely want to keep the conversation open. We're, we're not going anywhere and and we see the same benefits as you guys do. I just can't commit to that at this at this point.
Okay, well, I think, yeah, I I know we talked about in phase one, maybe, you know, carrying this on in the phase two and maybe be a little more prepared in phase two to talk about the easement. It sort of fell through the cracks. So now we're looking at phases three and four. And I guess we need a commitment. It sounds like DeMarco is certainly giving you a commitment to be part of those discussions. And if we can get someone on the town side to to champion this thing, to to work toward some sort of concept for when phase three comes in and phase four, that we have a better ideas what we want to do back there. So appreciate your, your willingness, Paul and and Greg. And we'll move on from the, I guess, easement discussion. Anything else? Anybody else has? Couple of things I have. I I listened to it on the ZBA meeting last week regarding this application. And a couple of things came up and our names were mentioned in vain.
I think you're talking about the Finger Lakes Radio Group.
Yes.
In the easement.
Yes. Have you made it any progress? For the benefit of the rest of the board, there was a question about the execution and finalization of a an access easement for the Finger Lakes Radio Group. The proprietor was somewhat frustrated. He said that the agreements have been going back and forth, and they were supposed to be signed, and they haven't been signed. And he would like to have them sign before, before action is taken on this. And it was sort of said, well, that's more of a planning board issue. So Greg, Paul, if you could tell us where you stand with that?
Yeah, yeah, I can. So that easement to Finger Lakes Radio Group was actually a condition of of phase one. We had prepared that easement and executed it on our side. And the 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 benefactor that easement actually wanted some language changed. I did, after the the call with the zoning board last week, talked to our attorney. He says that the language is now agreed upon, and they just need to sign the easement. So we're, we're obligated to provide that easement. We will provide that easement. And as soon as I get assigned an executed copy of that, I will forward it along to the town attorney to. As soon as I get assigned and executed copy that, I will forward it along to the town attorney to Chris. For his record. So I, I'm, I believe that we, we are at the goal line with that and it just needs to be routed for signature. So I think that. We're, we're in good shape there.
Does the board want to, uh, take Paul's statement in good faith or do we want to add a condition to this approval?
I would take it on good faith.
Okay. Okay. So yeah, if you could get that done, I'm sure, uh, he would appreciate it and the ZBA would appreciate it.
I take it a hundred percent on good faith. Paul actually. Communicated that with me earlier, but can we add it as a condition for tracking purposes? So instead of just me being. The one who has to remember it, Eric will also be the one remembering it.
That's dangerous, Chris. You're right. Two other things that came up at the ZBA was, uh, that plan Eric that shows the. Handicap spaces, uh, there was a question as to whether the use and the location of the handicap spaces were appropriate. Paul, Greg, do you remember that discussion? Uh, I think it was in front of where you had the bump outs.
Yep. Yeah, we did. Uh, that's a good point. We spoke about that with the zoning board. One of the members asked about. Handicap accessibility. And if those spaces where they were situated, uh, are adequate. And I, I've mentioned to the board, the zoning board that each of the buildings will have accessible units. Obviously they're on the ground floor. The, the. Grade of the sidewalk around the building. Is such that we're, we're. Essentially maintaining that accessible slope. Uh, all around these buildings. We don't have any steep slopes or anything that is in excess of 2%. And those spaces actually, even with the bump outs are not going to cause any hindrance. The sidewalks are five feet wide. And there, there's adequate space for someone with, that's mobility impaired to get from those spaces to the units.
I'll also add, there's really no hindrance from the mechanical room within the sidewalk area either to get to the, the accessible spaces.
Well, that was another issue came up. They said, do we need an impervious? Walkway from the sidewalk to the mechanical rooms. So. The mechanics would not be tromping through the grass.
And there are, we, we do have small sections of sidewalk proposed to get to, there's just a single mandor on the, under the mechanical room there.
Right. So you do have a, a walkway.
Yep. There'd be the concrete sidewalk would extend.
Okay, I see it. Yeah. When you drill down. Okay. All right. Well, that takes care of the ZBA's concerns. Are you, uh, you had phase three up there. Are you anticipating probably a reorientation of buildings with phase three also? Probably?
Boy Chuck, what have you done for me lately? Japer, I'm not even in the ground with two and you're killing me on three. No, no.
Well, we always try to look ahead.
No, I know.
So we get that easement too.
Yeah, no, I, I, we, we are, we are hopeful that, uh, this solar, um, uh, and geothermal. Situation for the utilities is, um, is, is something that we can repeat. And so it could very well be that any building that has a spine that is east and west orientation will have to be. Moved to north and south. So. It, it, it looks to me like there might be again, another six that would have to be flipped.
In this, this particular phase is a little easier. We were challenged in phase two, hence why we had to go for the variances. Because we already did the subdivision for and created all four of these lots. Where you can see on phase three, we do have. A little more room where we can adjust the site a little further north and not have to. Likely have that setback to the pavement, uh, issue. So BME's looked at that. We can accommodate that for phase three. And should we be so fortunate to, to be able to get phase two done and, and have what we believe again will be a high demand phase three would, would mimic phase two.
And if you recall in our original discussions in the preliminary and. When Tom and I went out to Baldwin'sville and looked at your project out there. I know there's a lot of discussion regarding the meters and regulators. Being outside the buildings and not being screened. And I think you. You spent a lot of time and effort on phase one to ensure that from the roadway and the parking lots. That those, uh. Those devices or meters would be screened. Would it be as. Big an issue with the new type of, uh, energy? System you're going to use on phase two that that's still an issue or is most of it inside?
The electric meters will still be on the outside, but there will be no gas meters. But, uh, there will be some electric meters that, um, are in the, um, alcoves. Of these buildings.
Yeah, I think at phase one with the gas meters specifically, and that's what we noticed at Baldwin'sville that the, uh. They, they, they kind of stuck out. They were, it was, it was one thing when you're walking, walking down the street and the, you know, the buildings look lovely and. And, and here were these, uh, these, uh, these creatures. Literally sort of standing out and, and glaring right at you. So. That's certainly an aesthetic thing, but I, I think it's something that we, that should be considered. And. I realize with electric meters, they're, they're not that obtrusive and. A lot tougher to screen, but I'm glad to hear the gas meters are inside.
So there are no gas meters.
Oh, there are no, okay.
Yeah. So there won't be any gas meters. This will all be electric. No, no. So there's no gas on, on, on phase two.
Right. We will not be looking at any gas meters on the outside, right? Because there are none. Okay. Gotcha. Thanks, guys. I gotta ask, uh, the, uh, the awards that you got and congratulation on those. I think it was like 1.4 million dollars. Is that? Is that money that's put back into the project or is that something that, uh, DeMarco goes and takes a trip to on a cruise ship?
Where do you want to go Chuck?
Not on a cruise ship.
Yeah. No, that, that, that has to be put back into the project. That will be one of the sources. That, that we, uh, bake into the project along with the tax credit equity, along with, uh, permanent financing. But that 1.4 million will be shown, will be used, uh, to, uh, to have hard costs. That is not profit. That, that's not anything we can just put in our, our pockets and we don't get it until it's built. Uh, obviously, um, but, um, that is a source that we can use. That we don't have to borrow as much. So if we don't have to borrow as much, then our rents can be cheaper. It's all about, um, that, that, that's really what it's all about is, is finding ways to raise equity or to raise grants or to raise. Funding that we don't necessarily have to pay back and therefore we can keep these projects more affordable.
Okay. And my, my last question and being nosy on finances. Given the current situation with, uh, you know, business and commercial properties and commercial entities these days. Are, is this project pretty well guaranteed financially, uh, to be able, once started to be completed?
Yeah. So I, so I recognize the, the concern that the board might have. Um, yeah. What, once, once we're allocated tax credits, uh, and once we're awarded the tax credits. The project is, is, is very secure. Because of the, of the market that is still there to buy these tax credits. The, uh, commitments that HCR, uh, has for, uh, any funding and any additional debt that they might have. And quite frankly, uh, construction interest is pretty low too. So. So we're, we're. Once we get the allocation of tax credits. It's a, it's a pretty secure and pretty safe.
We don't want, and I'm sure you don't want another birdcage.
No.
Situation here. In this case, it'd be, they'd be bird houses, I guess. Okay, I'm, uh, pretty well done. I'm almost ready to, to call for votes. Uh. I will op, open it up to anybody, anybody else on the board first. Okay, if. Sure, Gary.
I was just thinking maybe Eric could put up the resolutions.
Okay, I, I was gonna go see if anybody in TV land wants to, uh. Make a comment, uh, while he's doing that. Does anyone have any, uh, interest in this application as far as comments?
I just wanted to ask, are you, are we, um. Do you want to entertain, uh, questions about the, the clubhouse addition on phase one? Are we going to do that next?
Uh, I was gonna, I was gonna go double back to that. Yeah.
Okay.
Cause we really didn't, we didn't put the clubhouse up as far as the forward plan and.
Okay. On that, but I'll, I'll save those.
Okay. Uh, so why don't we just, uh, take under consideration the, uh. The final plan for phase two. See, uh, if we get the resolutions up, we have nothing, no issues as far as seeker, because that was all done with the preliminary. And, uh. As I said, the ZBA issues were resolved. Just see if there's anything else. BME went back and forth. You talked about the county sewer. There was an ag statement submitted. Uh, our, our friends, our friends again at the county planning board had no comment, if I recall. The better and different. So, uh, let's move on. Okay. We're looking at a resolution to, uh. To, uh, for the final site plan for phase two. If somebody wants to take that. And we'll discuss any additional conditions as part of the, once, once the motion's made.
All right, I will, uh, I'll go ahead and, uh, make a motion to, uh. Approve a, I can't read. Let me see. There we go. Approve a, uh, final, a phase site plan for phase two. Uh, of the Creekview Apartments at Woodland Park. Uh, and subject to.
Do the amended final, amended overall first.
Yeah, that, we don't have it on our screen.
I'm looking at a final phase site plan. So we have to do some.
Do amended overall. Then, um. Final phase two.
It's not on our screen.
Bring up the amended overall, please.
You know. Resolution.
Lance, Lance.
Yeah, I think, I think what I did is I didn't provide the amended overall preliminary resolution for this.
Yeah, I don't.
What I would suggest is if Eric could pull up, I can send him if he, if he can't access it, the original approved preliminary overall plan resolution.
Give me a minute.
I can do that right now.
I'll be able to access my work email if you send it there.
If I can just add a comment to Lance and Eric. What might help with this situation when we're doing this virtual stuff? Is I, like, I got the emails pulled up on my, on another computer here. But instead of waiting for Eric to bring up these resolutions, maybe we could figure out a way to add them. To the FTP site or something, something to consider after this meeting.
No, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
How difficult it is on the town side, but that makes sense to me. I'm sending the resolution right now to Eric. So that he can at least see the original approval and pull that open. I'm more than willing to go through that as well.
Well, well, wait, wait guys, how much is actually changing of that resolution other than we're changing, uh. The phase two orientation, uh, everything else is same number of buildings, same number of units.
The units are changed by only a couple. I thought I read somewhere.
The unit, unit count is the same.
Yes. I, I think it's minor changes to the parking and the building alignment. That's essentially it.
Yeah, but I thought I also read that there might be like, so instead of just one bedroom and two bedrooms, there might, there might be a mix of them someplace. Am I?
Mix is different, I think. You're right.
Same mix.
No. No, the, the, uh, the unit mix is, is different. There's 96 units. There is one more three bedroom and one less two bedrooms.
Sorry, Greg.
There, there, there are four. There are four buildings for each unit type.
Four, three bedrooms. Or it was a three, five, three, I can't remember, something like that. Yeah.
That's, that, that's right. And again, all that's, uh, project ba, uh, program based requirements. HCR requires family housing to have an average of two bedrooms per unit. So we weren't able to go in with our, uh, with our mix, with our u, the unit mix, our original. Unit mix. We had to modify that. Our market study still proves out that there's still a market for more three bedrooms. And less two bedrooms. But we have, uh, four units of each, four buildings of each. Well, for the record, same number of buildings, same number of units. That's right.
All right.
Well, this resolution will stand in perpetuity. Uh, what we're doing is amending it. So. If possibly we could take the amendment actually be what we approve for the final for phase two. So that. Essentially what we say in the phase two final would be added to the, uh. Somehow added or addressed in the revised preliminary. Is that something you could do?
You, you're referring to Lance, correct?
Uh, yeah, Lance.
Yeah, I think what I would do is I would just revise this, the, the description in the first whereas. To include exactly what you're referring to, the phase two changes that were made.
Or do you, can you, do you make a condition? I don't know if it's a condition on this, that the. That the amended, that the original phased plan be amended. Per the, per the conditions of this resolution or something like that?
That's essentially what I was saying, yeah.
So are we saying that they need to resubmit an overall plan sheet showing the building alignment change, rotation of the buildings changing?
Uh, yeah, I guess we would.
Mike, I think we did that.
Yeah, I have that. Right. Yeah, I thought we've been looking at all night.
Okay. No, you're looking at, I, I'm looking at a phase two plan. I don't have a preliminary overall plan.
Hey, Paul and Greg. Are you submitting this in the next two weeks?
Pardon me?
Are you submitting your application to the state in the next two weeks?
No.
Can we do this at the next meeting and have a, an actual resolution, which you can then flip to the state? You guys don't even have to be there. Just. Vote on this resolution at the next meeting. I'd like to have an actual one in front of the planning board. This is a big enough project that I don't think we should bring this one, guys.
Is there, is there anything you need from us to, to, uh, be able to. Draft that resolution and have, uh, any material, uh, necessary to, to do that in the next, next meeting on May 12th?
No, absolutely not. But we've got a planning board meeting two weeks from now. And the, I think the first item on the agenda could just be. Voting on the resolution. No presentation, no public hearing. Just voting on the resolution.
Greg, is that, is that gonna hinder your, your application schedule?
No, uh, we can, uh, we, uh, understand the issue tonight and, uh, two weeks from now is fine. Thank you. We are submitting, yeah, we are submitting. I think it's by the end of May. So, uh, so that works out well because we're going to need to. Package it all together.
Just so there's no surprises, everyone, everyone seems like they're on the same page with the conditions. I won't let you add that you have to put a trail he's been on there.
No, no, I won't do that. I promise. This project to move forward. We need construction right now more than ever right now. We want to support this project.
Thank you.
Lance, Lance, can, can you go through, uh, if, what, what other additional conditions you caught from the discussion that we want to have included? And just go through those now so we just all understand them?
Well, I guess. On the preliminary overall, the amended preliminary overall, the only changes are going to be. The fact that they're putting solar on the roofs, they're adding geothermal to the site and the building rotation had changed. Am I correct with that? And obviously the bedrooms, but I don't believe any of the resolutions that we've ever done identify the number of bedrooms in each of the units.
I don't think that was identified.
I think the size of the clubhouse too, right?
Well, let's talk about that separate. We can do that. We can probably act on that tonight.
Separate action.
Yep.
So if I understand correctly, a revised or amended preliminary overall. Will be provided to a resolution and a draft form provided to the board for the next plan board meeting. Of which it will include a description of the improvements that we're approving tonight for phase two.
Then you also need a final phase two resolution. With the conditions that Gary was asking about.
Right. So we're not approving phase two tonight. That'll be at the next board meeting as well.
I think Chris had recommended.
Yeah, I want to do preliminary overall, then final site. Yeah, I want to do preliminary overall, then final site, final phase two.
Okay.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to continue discussion on this particular application having to do with phase two until the May 12th meeting. Okay, I. John, did you get who it was?
Karen.
Karen was the motion?
Yep. Continue, yeah.
Second was.
Brian.
Brian, thank you. Okay, all in favor of continuing and thank you for all in favor, I? Opposed? Okay, fellas, I think we can handle this. It's just a matter of getting the verbiage right. So it's clear. I don't think there's any actual issues that have to be resolved. So you're certainly willing to join us on the 12th. And and please do. Probably be good to have at least one of you on, okay?
We'll be present. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, guys, and we'll see and hear from you on the 12th.
Are you gonna?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, let's. Okay, let's move on to CPN 2017, having to do with the amendment of phase one for the proposed additions to the clubhouse. Someone want to walk us through what those amendments are?
Sure. Sure. So Eric just just pulled up a floor plan, a couple things. The addition to the multipurpose room, you can see is, I think it's 16 by 35. It's an additional 550 square feet or thereabouts. We're going to be keeping the same roof roof line. That that is a that goes right down the center of that of that multipurpose room. This this addition that is says offices there, that is not something that we're seeking tonight. We are not going to do that. That's the office. Hello?
Sorry.
Chris.
Sorry, my five year old son just walked into the room.
Love it.
I thought it was unmuted.
Love it. And and then the other is to the right of your screen is the is the maintenance shop that we are doubling in size. Again, we're keeping the same roof line, so it'll look like it. It's always been in there. We're just pushing out the we're just pushing out the wall about 12 feet. Again, to house some more lawn equipment, still removal equipment, some additional supplies. This is an identical floor plan, Mr. Chairman, that you saw in Baldwinsville at at River Knoll at Radisson. So we did the same thing when we did phase two at at River Knoll at Radisson.
Saw that and it looks very nice.
Thanks.
In Baldwinsville, yes.
I think there's elevations of this building with the the expansions that we we had sent over to Eric in if the board was interested in seeing that.
Yeah, we saw those.
Yep, great.
I saw them, but they weren't. They weren't labeled though what the building was. I just figured it out what I wanted to know.
Okay, questions from the board? I think it's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, I did have. I did have a couple of questions.
Sure.
That it really had to do with the along with this, it looks like there's a a proposed patio area that's going to be added and a proposed play area in the back off of that new addition, the patio area. So my my first kind of commoner question was about the play area. When I think play area, I think kids, playground equipment, that type of stuff. And if that's the case, I guess my my question was, why is that going to be an asphalt? And had you thought about doing some other type of surface other than asphalt? If if that's indeed what the use of that play area is going to be. If it's if I had that wrong and it's more teenage adult things like maybe a basketball court, is that why it's asphalt? And are we going to see basketball hoops up there? So I'm kind of just understanding why it's asphalt and and what is the real purpose of that play area?
Right. So we do have a existing playground, which is to the south of the clubhouse. Which you may have seen, which is kind of on an AstroTurf type of surface. We wanted to provide something a little bit for the teenage crowd. So that is a hard court. That is a hard surface. And there will be a basketball hoop on one side of the of the of the surface. So there will be, so that will be an asphalt surface that will be a hard court for ball playing. In terms of the in terms of the patio, there is currently an existing patio that is out the existing clubhouse. We're just moving that out a little bit further now that we're expanding the multipurpose room.
Okay, and so if that's going to be a basketball basketball area and patio area or stuff like that, my next question, I guess, is about lighting. Or is there going to be any lighting that's going to light up that basketball court at night? Or is there any exterior lighting in that patio area for evening events or anything like that that we need to understand and be concerned about?
I believe that there is existing lighting on that shines down onto the patio. I believe there may not be a double check that. But but the but the idea is not to light up the basketball court. You know, when it's dark, it's dark. Go home.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to ask about that.
Yeah, of course.
Good questions. Anyone else on the board on this application? Okay, anyone in the gallery like to comment on this? Any satisfied residents from Creekview? No?
Unless Anthony has any questions.
I'm good. I'm good.
Thanks, Anthony. I appreciate your support.
He's not looking for us. He's going to build his own. Alrighty. Gosh, does this require a revision to the preliminary overall? I hate to even bring that up. Okay.
I think we're amending the final phase one plans to add in addition to the clubhouse.
Okay.
Amendment. We have an amendment.
Okay, I like what you're saying. So we're only looking at one resolution here.
So moved.
Yeah.
It's very hard to sit for longer than three hours at a computer.
I'm making a motion to approve. 017 amended final a phase one site plan approval resolution. 33,000, County Row at 10.
Good, second.
Yes, okay, a motion of second. Gary, do you want to include any of your concerns in the conditions?
No.
Okay.
Nope, I just wanted to make sure if there was lighting or something, we probably would have put it in there, but there's not, so I'm okay.
Okay.
For the. I'm sorry, for the board's review, the two conditions, one is our standard. The second one was I just made it conditions on all the original conditions of phase one, which for the record, most of them have already been addressed. As the as the site is existing, essentially.
Except for the radio easement.
That's that was where I was going. My third, my third condition, do you want me to add in that the sanitary sewer to the radio parcel is to be filed with the county clerk and the town clerk prior to?
I think it's the access easement. I think that's what.
Correct. Figure like radio access easement.
Okay. That would.
Great idea.
That'd be belts and suspenders. Good.
Okay, three conditions. I I accept that.
All right, got a motion of a second. Anybody else for the discussions? I hope not. So let's move on. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, guys, we we got half of what you wanted done tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys taking the time and hosting this format. We'll we'll see you on the 12th.
Sorry, we don't serve drinks, but.
Who says we're not drinking?
As far as you know.
I saw I saw Greg. He's got a little that potato juice there, I know.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, well, now now the pace is going to pick up because we're going to move on to Anthony. And he's got a song and dance. He's going to perform.
I'll make it real quick.
Well, Eric, do you think we should handle the subdivision, amended subdivision first before we take care of the lot itself?
Yeah, let's do that.
No, I mean, there's really the amended subdivision, really, the only thing that we changed was we added that area around the hydrant to be the 26 feet. So we added that 26 foot width around the hydrant per request of the town. The subdivision, everything stays the same, the layout.
As far as the changes from the last time the planning board saw it, this lot was originally two. And it didn't pass that hash line. So we did a lot line adjustment and kind of moved it. And then the amended uh, plan is just essentially for grading utilities.
And the Hammerhead is the town standard size wise?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, then we've got those that access road that goes up. And I know we talked about this before. So that'll be a private driveway that'll service four homes now, right?
Yes, then that private driveway, that agreement has already been in is in place. So there's the different the three different, I mean, the private driveway is in place. Right now, the agreement currently Venezia Group owns three of the four lots. Lot 56 has been sold and they're part of that agreement as of right now. This will give us lot 56 will be building in the next two to three years. And as soon as we can get approval from the town, we are going to install the utilities and everything to finalize this section.
Okay, it's a 20 foot wide private drive up to the where the hydrant is, wide just to 26. Lance, I'm trying to remember our standards with a private drive is was 20 feet the dimension?
I believe so.
Okay. I I was going to look it up, but then I got.
I think it's 20 feet of pavement and I can't remember the width of the right away, maybe 30.
Yeah, you're correct. And then it's got to be 26 feet where hydrants located for fire.
And we got a sewer easement for the sanitary back to Anthony's lot and other than that, I think we're good to go. Anything from the board? Any concerns, questions on the subdivision amendment? Do I recall seeing a resolution for this or is this?
Something. It's going to be the same resolution as before, just voted on.
Okay. As amended.
As amended, correct.
Okay. And there's no further conditions. Eric, in the emails.
Yep, I'm sorry.
The lot line adjustment for the for that one lot that's being consolidated, does you had said something about that has to occur before the signing of the plan or something to that effect?
This sheet that I'm showing right now has already been signed by you, Chuck, I think. So the lot line adjustment has already been done.
That has been filed.
So when the plan set yeah, when the plan set comes back in, really don't want this one in it just so we don't sign it again.
Okay. Okay, good get. All right, so I think we're good to go. So Lance, you'll essentially revise the original motion and if I can get a motion from someone on the board to to do this amendment, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, Eric's showing the original resolution right now.
I would move CPN 106 dash 07. That's the one I'm seeing, right?
Right.
amended preliminary overall plat site subdivision approval. And I move its adoption.
I'll second it.
I'm showing a CPN of 19082 on the agenda.
Yeah.
That's.
I only read the one that was up here because I don't have.
No, I see that and that's what I'll read.
No, for the record, it's CPN 19 dash 082, which was the original Foxridge plan.
Okay, it's not 20 dash 18, right? No, no. Okay. Well, that's the one I read, correct?
Yeah, no, that's the next application that we'll talk about.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's 18. So this is CPN 19082, not to prolong the discussion. It's not as you're showing here. Lance, it'll be it'll be a new CPN number with the amended subdivision plan, right?
I maybe I'm misunderstanding. I'm looking at the I'm looking at the resolution and the and the CPN number is identified as 19 dash 082, which is the original approval date of November 26, 2019 for the amended final subdivision for Foxridge 5B1.
Right.
Right. Last year we amended it. That's the CPN number from last year, but the resolution you said has must be the original approval when it was first done in 2007, CPN 106 dash 07.
I don't know. The one, yeah, I don't know what one you have because I have a different one open. Okay, fair enough.
Just make sure we get the right CPN number. That's all, guys.
For the record, I have it down as the right one. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So I have a motion from Karen, a second from Bob, and we're ready to move on with a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, so let's move on to what's going to happen.
Excuse me, Chuck.
Yeah.
What is the CPN number?
I think the CPM number for the amended subdivision is CPN 19082.
Okay. So Lance will be giving us a resolution CPN 19082.
For, yes.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. So now we move on to CPN 2018, which has to do with Anthony's proposed site plan for the lot at the back end of this cul-de-sac. So Anthony, what are you going to do up there?
Also, so the plan here is it's pretty simple. It's just, you know, it's going to be a two story house with a walkout. We're gonna, it's gonna be the, we're gonna do an asphalt drive. We're proposing, we're probably gonna wait because of trying to get it in now and get it paid before the end of the year is going to be a little bit tight. So the plan is to leave it gravel until we can pave it in the spring. But what it is, everything is a public utilities, water, sewer, electric, gas is all there and it will all be installed relatively in a short period of time coming up with the approval that we were just given. Really not a lot to it. It's just just the the single family house. It's it. There's really not a lot of clearing that needs to be done. We're staying outside the wooded area. It's pretty standard stuff. If you have any questions.
Are you going to build it at that first floor elevation?
First floor elevation is, yeah, so it's going to be a walkout, so the.
It's getting late. I had to get the jab in.
Yeah, the lower end will be the lower end will be a walkout to just nothing right now. We're not planning any patios or whatnot. We're trying to the the goal of this house is we're we're developing a super airtight, you know, insulated pattern. So in the future, we can look at alternative energy sources, whether it's geothermal or solar. So the goal here is to really get a super airtight, you know, insulated insulated house so we can build off of that and eventually achieve like a net zero type house.
Okay, questions from the board? Okay, questions from the board?
This is Bob, I had none. I reviewed his, uh, package. My question was Lot 56, how that was gonna get access, but that was just answered on the site plan. So I didn't have any, it was, looked a good plan to me.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Uh, I know, uh, the county had a, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, what's the length of that, that drive, that driveway?
It's about 500 feet.
Oh, okay.
Actually, I think it's over like 300 feet, now that I think about it. It's like 300 feet, because you can see that one line that goes from the, right where the, right where the, um, right-of-way start, where the, it widens out to the right-of-way, it's like a 300-foot line, and so it's about 300 feet.
Okay.
It's not very far.
All right, that's not far, it, it, it just, yeah, in the drawings, it looked like it was a long drive, I couldn't tell.
That's nice, actually, it looks a lot longer than it is.
Right, yeah.
Okay, I think Lance brought up the issue, making sure the concrete monuments for the conservation easement are either have been installed or will be?
Yeah, they will be installed, and Lance and I had a discussion about that, and, um, I also talked to Eric about it, we're gonna work together to make sure that once we put the, the post up, they'll have the right signage on them. And Eric and I are gonna kind of go back and forth with what the town would like those to say, because I know it's not a typical easement, it's an easement to the town of Canada, I just don't know if Eric wanted something specif- or that even the planning board wanted to say something specific.
Yeah, if I may, um, originally, part of the, the original approval, it was identified that some type of a post would be put along the boundary line when we had seven to eight different properties abutting it. Now that we only have one, um, being that we haven't had an approved detail, uh, by the town yet, as to what that eat, that, that monument would look like, I suggested that, um, Anthony provide one to the town, and the town work with him to, 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 to identify what that would look like.
Sounds like a plan, okay.
And what we're plan, Chuck, what we're planning on is, is a, is a typical four-by-four pressure-treated post, probably sunk it in the ground about two to three feet, and using that, there's a newer style polyurethane expandable foam that's on the market for post-filling, and it's really solid, and it's really, it settles up pretty fast. Um, and it lasts a lot, lasts a lot longer, it, um, it protects the post a little bit more than concrete, so it would stay longer. And then it'd be some sort of, you know, conservation area easement, no trespassing, or, you know, do not disturb sign. Something like green and white typically, like you'd see with a conservation.
Okay, as long, as long as it lasts, I guess.
It'll, it'll last.
Okay. And you don't hit it with a mower. Alrighty, anything else, ladies and gentlemen? Uh, anyone in, uh, and we're down to not too many participants, I don't think anybody else has any comments on this, uh, anybody from the homeowners association? I guess not. Okay, we've done our due diligence there. All right, then I guess, uh, all things being equal, if you wanna show us the resolutions, Eric, we'll move on. I will say, we didn't discuss landscaping at all, it's not really an issue for the planning board on lots such as this, it's up to the, uh, the applicant, the homeowner, as to how they wanna landscape.
Yeah, we're, we're definitely gonna be doing some sort of landscaping, we're just not sure yet what we wanna do.
It's, it's not something you have to show us. Okay, we got a type-two resolution, or type-two action, uh, for seeker, somebody wanna, uh, you can probably take that in the, uh, in the site plan, too.
Yeah, I'd like, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, or make a type-two seeker designation, uh, no adverse impact, and site plan approval for a single-stage site plan at, boom, CPN 20-018. And how many conditions? We have still just the eight, I think, is there eight? Correct, eight as proposed, unless the board changes that. I, I don't think I heard any discussion on anymore that we need.
You have the park and rec fee in there?
I think it's on the overall, Chuck, uh, maybe, let me double-check. Because I think it's part of the preliminary overall, not necessarily the final, but we can show that on the final.
Yeah, uh, prior to, uh, what, the COO, was it the building department? Yep.
Oh, I have that in there, so condition number nine.
Okay. Very good. Okay, Gary has made a motion for both these resolutions, so I have a second.
I'll second.
Bob has seconded, thank you very much. Uh, all in favor of both resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, Anthony, good luck.
Thank you very much. Eric, are we talking about Silvernail tonight, or no?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna talk about it, I don't know how much we're gonna do on it, unless you have something to add.
I just, I have a little bit to add, not much.
Okay.
As of right now.
For the good of the board, we're moving down to CPN 19040, uh, having to do with HMD, HML properties. This is the one that we discussed last meeting, and, uh, I think we had asked for a more detailed landscape plan showing how the area that was, uh, encroached, uh, was going to be stabilized. So Anthony, go ahead.
Yep, so what we had, we did, um, we had Dan Hackett take a look at this for us, as far as if we were to reforest it. And he had his suggestions, and, and we're working with him and the owner right now as to find a, a kind of a, a happy medium between total reef, like, 75% reforestation, and him still being able to use it more as a yard, instead of just totally letting it go back to natural wooded area, so we are still in that process. It is gonna be more of a random pattern instead of a, you know, a gridded, little grove over in the bottom right corner, will be more expansive in that area. And it also, it'll, it'll have a slight different feel for it, there'll be a kind of a mix of trees instead of just one, one specific, so it is more of like, you know, some oaks, and hickories, and things of that nature, something, something that's found in, in those woods right now. Um, we're still in the process of going through, trying to get that happy medium be- between what, what would be a total bring-back, and, um, what the client is, is looking for as an end result. So, we're still working on that, I should have Eric something in the next couple days, so you guys could actually see it and, and, and have a vote.
So is that okay to move it to the 12th? Uh, you'll be ready by then? Okay. Uh, so I'll entertain a motion at the table.
I think that's, that sounds like a good plan.
Well, I think we had asked for something to that effect, and, uh, I'm glad to hear Anthony, uh, tell us that they're moving in that direction. So I have a motion at the table, uh, I'll make that motion, do I have a second?
Aye.
Second being Bob. Uh, all in favor, this will be tabled to the May 12th meeting, and, uh, the sooner you can get that plan in, Anthony, the better.
Yeah, Eric will have it by the end of the week.
Okay, very good. All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You, too.
Alrighty, let's go back up. I think we're now ready to approve the minutes from the April 7th and the 14th meeting. Do I hear a motion for both sets of minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve minutes for April 7th and April 14th.
I second.
Very good, I think there are a couple suggested amendments to the first draft, but, uh, they were appreciated, so John, thank you for taking care of that. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, uh, there's no referrals from town board. There's no recommendation to the ZBA, although, uh, if you remember the Summer Hayes, property, uh, that was discussed by the ZBA, and they were sort of between a rock and a hard spot. I think they were, it was a consensus that they didn't want to approve a variance on a, to make a non-conforming lot more non-conforming. Uh, but the applicant, uh, made an appeal that, uh, they're gonna develop the lot to the north, and I think that the ZBA said that we want to see some sort of plan for the development of the lot to the north in order for us to consider the, uh, the variance on the lot to the south, which is the one that's becoming not, more non-conforming. So that has been postponed to the next ZBA meeting. Did I cover that adequately, Eric?
Yeah, I mean, it certainly sounded like the board probably wasn't gonna go for it, but the applicant wanted them to have that information, because that was kind of what their variance hinged on.
Okay. Uh, recommendations from, uh, the CEO, uh, seen or heard nothing there. We got a letter of credit, a letter of credit request for a release on a surety for, uh, James Aquiliano, a property at 5797 Smith Road. Lance, you have what that amount is, what's going on?
Yes, I'm sorry, trying to hit the unmute button, you think it would go faster. It's, uh, 1,000 for, for $1,400.
Okay.
Which is the covered cost of the, I'm sorry, cover the cost of the erosion control that this board imposed upon the application.
Very good. Anybody have any questions? If not, I'll take a motion to release the thousand-odd dollars.
I'll make that motion to release that.
Bob has made a motion.
I'll second that, Gary.
Gary has seconded, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're getting there, guys. So we took care of the next two, so we're down to the ordinance committee. Eric, what you, tell us what's happened.
Um, okay, so pools in the RLD, the ZBA, as you guys also were, see a number of variances for, uh, spas, hot tubs, being in the rear yard. Since they've generally approved them, we're, they're worried about a precedent being made, and so they wanted to change the code to kind of get ahead of that. So what this code does essentially is allows certain pools within the rear yard. By the way, pool includes, uh, in-ground, like a hot tub, something like that, that would still be considered cool. So it allows certain pools within the rear yard, the RLD, so in between house and the lake. And it also allows above-ground pools if it's in the RLD, but not on the lakeside, so it would have to be kind of on the other side of the road.
Okay.
Any comments on that one?
Oh, that's good.
No, I think it cleans up, uh, what the ZBA's been wrestling with for, I guess, last couple of applications. So, uh, I think the key was not to have any above-ground pools facing the lake, which certainly precludes, so, uh, I, if it's the wish of the board, uh, you could probably pass it along to the, uh, town board that, uh, we are in favor of this proposal. Delating, we, I know we talked about that a little bit last time.
Yeah.
I don't think there's been any changes, right?
No, no changes, it's a little bit harder to give a brief run-through, but essentially, it's just updating the code. And since you guys have had it for a little while now, if you guys have any comments, I'd be happy to take it.
All I remember is the flagpole lighting, that's concerning, but Ryan and I think Gary had. And I, I guess it should be at least discussed, uh, since it's still at an ordinance committee, right?
Say that again?
The, uh, the proposal, the draft is still at ordinance committee review?
Yes, um, so essentially, they'll take a look at the comments they received one more time. If, uh, the ordinance committee likes it, then they'll kick it to the town board, and if the town board makes it, they'll set a public hearing, at which time it will also be reported back to the boards again.
Can the board's concern about the flagpole lighting, or at least be discussed at the next ordinance committee meeting, which I, I hope to, uh, sit in on, so I could, I could bring that up then.
Yeah, I'm not sure that the lighting one will be addressed at the next one, as in next week, uh, but certainly a future one.
Okay. So if it's the board's purview, I will, uh, take that to the ordinance committee and, uh, stress, or not stress, but at least express the concern about how will flagpole lighting be handled, okay? Alrighty, uh, training sessions, uh, just keep an eye out for those, I know there's a, the State Department of General Services had it, or the Department of State had a online webinar, and we have the one that John had sent us regarding some of the county, uh, the county ones coming up, so keep an eye out for those, not much else happening in that regard. Uh, just doing a quick look ahead to the next meeting. Uh, Cassiano, uh, will be back, I think, uh, Eric, Lance, somebody had a recent update on, uh, I guess it was...
BMA essentially just sent us an email saying what we all knew, that because of, uh, COVID-19 epidemic, they are delaying kind of going out to the site and working with the neighboring property owner. And, uh, when they can, they will let us know, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, so I doubt, I doubt that'll be ready to go on the 12th. Yeah, exactly.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, we continue to the 12th, so if we have to continue beyond that, we will too, so.
There are a couple of applications that don't show up, um, on the agenda here, but you guys got them yesterday, I think.
Yeah, specifically O'Byrne, Carson, New Bay.
Yep.
They do not involve ZBA, so, uh, since the meeting was kind of late on the 12th, we thought we'd move them up to the 12th. So you'll be seeing your, those plans in your mailings and on the FTP site. Uh, we've also tonight added Creek View Phase Two. And, uh...
In the creek wheel, preliminary overall.
Uh, preliminary overall and final, final phase two.
Correct, sorry, Chuck, thank you.
Nope, thanks for the correction. We're all getting punchy, all right. Anybody else have anything for the good of the board? I appreciate everybody's patience tonight. It was a long one, and it's, it, this is much tougher than sitting at a diocese and being able to talk to each other, but, uh, we got through it. So, thanks again for your patience. Uh, Brian, your cue.
Hey, it'll be good to see Dan O'Byrne.
Is he the guy I'm thinking about that was the appraiser?
Yeah, he was a cone forestman officer.
Assessor, yeah, but he was, isn't he from Farmington?
Yep. No, he lives on Knott Road.
That's right.
Yeah, he's been in Kansas, for the 15 years that I know him, he's been in Canada.
Okay.
I hope everybody's safe. I'll make a motion to adjourn at 9:40 PM. Woo!
Wow. We earned our money tonight, guys, okay, thank you, goodnight, stay well.
All right, take care.
Eric, this is John, are you still there?
Aye.
Um, the PowerPoint presentation from DeMarco, could you post that to the board site? It's not on the board site.
Oh, it's on the server, yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, thanks a lot.